Hello, everybody. Welcome. We're going to get started on our regular city council meeting. Hi, welcome. Today is Tuesday, August 25th, 2015. It's our regular city council meeting. Welcome. We're located at the Veterans Memorial Hall, and our meeting is starting at 6:00 PM, or thereabouts, located at 209 Sur Street here in Morro Bay. Thank you very much. For the record, we do have a quorum, and we'll call the meeting to order. And if you'll please join me, starting out with a moment of silence. And from that, we'll proceed with a pledge of allegiance. If you'll join me with that, I appreciate it.
Ready to begin? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unafraid, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thanks, everyone. And close session report. Joe, anything to report out from our close session?
No close session, so nothing to report.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that. And on to mayor and council member reports and announcements. And I'll start off with announcements. If you'll bear with me, I regret that I have to read this letter, but it's on behalf of Councilmember Matt Makawetzki. Mayor Irons, as many of you know, I've been battling a very persistent eye infection, one that makes it incredibly difficult to do the many daily tasks, let alone give due diligence to city council responsibilities. It has been ongoing for approximately six weeks, and it has become clear that it is affecting my ability to serve on council. The prognosis is positive, and yet even with continued treatment, it could continue for some time. Please accept this brief letter requesting that city council grant me a leave of absence from serving on city council. I would like to ask for up to 90 days of leave and return to city council when I'm physically able. In addition, if I am unable to return, I will let council know as soon as possible. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Matt Makawetzki. So, Joe, do you want to make any comments to help us with this?
Certainly. You can place in your next meeting's agenda an item to discuss whether or not to grant permission for that absence. There's a provision of the government code, I don't remember the number, that provides that if someone is absent, with an unpermitted absence for 60 days from council meetings, then they automatically abstain, and they automatically give up that seat. But what that section means is if the council allows that absence, then the seat stays with that person. So, the request would, what I'm hearing the request to be is to see whether or not the council will be willing to give that permission for that 90-day period.
Okay, thanks for that. And so, not that council will get into that discussion at this time, but it'll be during council declaration of future agenda items, where we can agendize that for discussion. All right. Joe, thanks for that. And with that, I'll turn it over to any other announcements. Christine? John?
Good evening. As your representative for council on the Integrated Waste Management Committee in the county, I wanted to make the announcement that finally, after seems like years, they have approved and gotten designation from the California State Board of Pharmacy and the Department of Justice to allow for all pharmacies in the county to be able to take back unused medications. It will be in the form of a drop box that will be located in pharmacies that decide to sign up. I know in our community, one of two is participating. I will say that this is a significant issue, or has been a very significant issue, for those of us that may be irresponsible and actually throw these kinds of medications away in our garbage cans. They do contribute to toxic waste, integrate, get into the groundwater, and it's been a problem for a long time. So, a very positive step on our county and the part of the IWAMG to get this done. So, I just want to make that announcement today, and thank you for that. It'll be starting next week.
Great, John. Thank you. Noah?
Yes, briefly, just wanted to announce on behalf of Councilmember Makawetzki, who sits on our National Estuary Program Executive Committee. The National Estuary Program is working currently on putting out a bunch of excellent information celebrating their 20th anniversary. And one of the items that they will be presenting this weekend, on August 29th, Saturday, from 10:00 to noon at the Morro Bay Community Center, will be a forum evaluating the health of the estuary. Presentation and discussion by Jen Nix, the Restoration Projects Manager, as well as Anne Kitajima, the Monitoring Program Manager. They'll be talking about the health of the bay and creeks for people and wildlife is the general subject, and should be very interesting, reviewing the current situation with eel grass decline, and talking about what future restoration programs and efforts are going to be taking place. So, once again, that'll be August 29th, this Saturday, 10:00 AM to noon at the community center. And if you'd like some more information, you can go to nbnep.org.
Thanks, Noah. And with that, that'll conclude our announcements, and we'll move on to public presentations. On the agenda, we have two presentations listed. We will only be receiving one presentation. I think the second one, California Clean Power, will be moved to a future September council meeting. So, tonight, we have Slow Ride Share presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Irons, council members, and audience. For those of you I haven't met, my name is Peter Williamson. I'm the Employer Outreach Coordinator at Slow Regional Ride Share. Ride Share is, sorry, I don't have the clicker. The next slide would be coming up now. Your one-stop shop for transportation information. So, we have programs for commuters, travelers, as well as parents and students at K-12 schools, seniors, and persons with disabilities. If you want to get involved as a parent, an employer, an educator, or caretaker, please reach out to us to adequately serve all of our communities. We definitely need all the help we can get. So, now, let's go back to the opening slide there. And how many of you have taken Uber pool to work? I think so. Anybody bike to work? How about carpool? Well, as you can see, it's not about the mode you choose. It is a movement, and not just from point A to B, but the lifestyle that comes with it. And in the past, Slow Regional Ride Share has focused a lot on our campaign months, which you may be familiar with, Ride Share Month and Bike Month. And in reality, our county has traffic problems the other 10 months as well. And since we've started engaging employers throughout the year, we decided it's time for something a little different. So, we're taking a step back to our Ride Share Week model, and focusing, it also coincides with California Ride Share Week, incidentally. So, during that week, we'll have lots of events, and these aren't set in stone, but just to give you an idea, we'll have an event each day in the different areas. We do plan to have buses, van pools, as well as bike Slow County present at each transportation fair to allow employees to consider the commute option that works best for their needs. And attendees at these events will receive a T-shirt with the logo, which you can see there, pretty awesome, a bite to eat, as well as some other sweet giveaways. These events generate excitement with our current audience, but also provide opportunity to have meaningful conversations. So, for instance, if I'm at Sports Warehouse, and I can have that conversation with someone that currently drives alone, it's much more impactful. If Morro Bay wants to support doing an event, there's still time to get involved, so do feel free to reach out to me. And so, on to the next. Have you ever seen anyone biking up the Questa Grade? You see those crazy people? Have you ever, also, like, on a different note, have you ever wondered who times the traffic lights along your daily commutes? Well, our hashtag, along with "It's not a mode, it's a movement," is "Let's Get Visible." And it's about telling those stories. After all, to make alternative transportation meaningful, we need to generate meaningful conversations. So, that's what the hashtag will be all about. And who remembers Hidden Cash from last year? We had $100 cash drop, I think, at the bike path here in Morro Bay, as well as the coffee shop, possibly. If you like clues and you like cash, join our social media scavenger hunt for the second go-around. We have a loyal following with our programs, but campaigns like Hidden Cash Slow allow us to engage a totally new audience with smart commute information. And as you can imagine, it also gets people talking. If you have kids in school, save the date for, sorry, it got kind of blocked out there. It's weird. National Walk to School Day, that's October 7th. Our Safe Routes to School Coordinator is working on getting walking school buses again this year. And at this time, we don't have commitment from any Morro Bay schools, so if any parents or educators want to get involved in that, please take my card on the side table over here, or just email info@rideshare.org. Last but not least, we're doing a non-single-occupant-vehicle challenge to engage our employers on iRideShare. For those of you who don't know, iRideShare is our county's carpool matching, as well as a place that you can earn incentives for your smart commutes, share rides to events, and compete in challenges year-round. Our Ride Share Week challenge will put employers of similar sizes against one another to see who can log the most alternative commutes. So, will the City of Grover employees, or the City of Morro Bay employees, log more commutes? I don't know. You decide. No, no matter how you decide to get around, thank you for considering your options, and for spreading the word to those that you know. Does anyone have any questions for me this evening?
Thank you. Any questions for Peter? Yes, Christine.
Hi, thanks, Peter. Welcome back to Morro Bay. I would like to say, though, I like the new slogan. It's not a mode, it's a movement. That's great. You're playing off that modes of transportation, right?
Exactly. It's a year-round thing. It's not about just the month, like we typically do.
It's great. You guys have great slogans to get the word out. Thanks.
And great graphics. Thanks, not mine there, Mallory. She does a great job. There's some free swag over here on the side for anybody in the audience or on the council that wants to pick some of that up, as well as some more information and some cards. Thank you so much.
Peter, thanks very much for your work, and coming down to Morro Bay and giving us a presentation. Appreciate it. Thank you. And with that, that'll conclude our public presentations at this time, and we can move on to public comment. And for public comment, we traditionally open with a business spot, and Hillary Hopkins from Placer Title Company will be opening up our public comment. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and the audience. My name is Hillary Hopkins, and I'm a certified escrow officer, and I am the branch manager of Placer Title Company right here in Morro Bay. We opened our office a few weeks ago. We're up and running and fully operational. We're located at 545 Main Street, right at the corner of Driftwood and Main. We're a full-service title and escrow company. Placer Title was founded in 1973 in Placer County. We're the largest independent title company in the West. We do refinance escrows, sale/purchase escrows. We do title work if people are getting lot line adjustments, things like that. We have a lot of information available to people with regard to their property. Sometimes people are doing some estate planning, and their attorneys need some information on their properties. We are always happy to help. We're always happy to answer questions. We have offices now throughout the county. Our newest office is right here in Morro Bay, and we have an office in San Luis Obispo, Paso Robles, and Cambria. And we're growing, and we're very excited to be here in Morro Bay. We do all of our work here in California. We do not outsource any of our title work or anything. So, the founding people of Placer Title founded the company with a culture of taking care of their employees, so their employees can take care of their customers. And it really is a great company. Very happy to be with it, and very happy to be here in Morro Bay. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Hillary. Welcome. And with that, public comment is now open. For those who'd like, anybody who'd like to speak to any item not, or any issue not on the agenda, you may please do so now. Welcome.
We are council members, and my name is Ivana. Staff with the San Luis Obispo County Planning Department, and I'm part of the Housing and Economic Development Division. I'm here today to make a quick announcement. Our division is hosting a Needs and Fair Housing Workshop, and this is for the 2016 grant funding cycle, and it's a very exciting time. So, some of the grants that we'll be discussing during these workshops include the CDBG, Community Development Block Grants, the Home Investment Partnership Program, the Home Grant, and the Emergency Solutions Grant, ESG. So, we have two locations and two dates for these meetings. The first is going to be on September 8th, North County, held at the Tascadaro Library, from 5:00 to 6:00. And the second meeting will be September 15th in South County, Napoma Library, also 5:00 to 6:00 PM. So, I have flyers here to distribute for whichever community member is interested, and this is open to all. And it's a great opportunity for community members alike to come together, and for our planning department to receive input and to answer questions about what sort of projects should be funded in your community, identify what the needs are in your specific area. And there will be Spanish translation and snacks. For more information, we have all our contact information on the bottom of this page, and I'll leave my card here as well. I can take any questions?
Great, Ivana. I think if you can leave the, all the material with our staff, unless there's any questions from, okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Thanks for coming out.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Walter Heath, resident of Morro Bay. And I come to you tonight to report a good news, community-affirming story. The folks who are the group that's planning the BMX Bike Park, and for those of you who don't know, those BMX bikes are the ones that the kids like, that do the jumps over the dirt, piles of dirt and stuff. So, it's a great, going to be a great activity for the youth of Morro Bay. They needed to come up with a grading plan before they could, and an erosion control plan, before they could put a shovel in the ground. And so, they reached out to me, and I reached out to Gabriel Frank. And Gabriel put together a landscape plan and an erosion control plan with California natives. It's really something to behold, and he is to be congratulated because he did the work pro bono. And that plan will be, you know, available for everyone to see. I guess at some point, you know, it might even be presented at a meeting, hopefully here. And I offer that as an example of good collaboration in the community. The only thing better than that kind of collaboration is when the collaboration takes place in a public setting. And so, for projects like these, related to creating more inviting public spaces and preserving our history, a Citizens Beautification and Heritage Committee has been formed. And it will be meeting on Thursday, two days from now, August 27th, from 10:00 in the morning until 11:30 AM, in the studio room at the community center. And some of the topics on the agenda include a fall street tree planting. Last November, 24 volunteers, residents, got together and planted 10 street trees in 90 minutes, which is really astonishing, including digging the holes. A report on the Hidden History Project, which is a project that is discovering aspects of Morro Bay's history, and with the idea of bringing them to light, bringing them to the public. A Highway 41 Overpass mural project, which right now is pretty much a gleam in everyone's eyes, so that there's a lot to be talked about there. The BMX Bike Park update and design review. We're going to discuss adopt-a-park recognition and signage. And then, we're also going to brainstorm and prioritize future projects on which the community can collaborate. So, I would like to invite everyone who's interested to come to the community center on Thursday, and at 10:00 AM, to attend that meeting. Everybody's welcome. There's a member of city staff, a member of the city council there, and our minutes will be reported to the Public Works Advisory Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Walter.
My name's Robert Davis, and I live in Morro Bay. One of the things that we do as members of Morro Bay and Bloom is to help the city pick up litter in public places. And one of those places is Centennial Parkway, which we have adopted. And we are accustomed to picking up cigarette butts there, in spite of the city's ban on outdoor smoking. But this past week was just extraordinary. I spent more than an hour picking up almost exclusively cigarette butts. Then, the total accumulation would have filled this bucket. I have no problem with people who choose to smoke because it's a legal activity, except in public places in Morro Bay. Council adopted a municipal code that prohibits public smoking. I think the problem is that we haven't told the public that they're not supposed to smoke in public places. And I wonder if we could put up some signs. I'm not a big fan of overloading places with signs, but I'm thinking that maybe some kind of cute signs that people would be willing to conform with might help keep people from lighting up. And if we have signs up, it would also help people who want to approach someone who's smoking and say, "Do you mind putting your cigarette out, because it's not legal to smoke here in Morro Bay?" I don't think anybody's going to be arrested. It's not a crime. It's an infraction. But if we have some signs, maybe it could help alleviate the problem. So, thank you.
Great, thanks.
Thanks, Red.
Thanks for the work on the weekend.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Rick Morse, and I operate Medmar Clinic at 334 East Olive Avenue in Fresno, California. We are a medical-
I'm sorry, can you say your name again? I didn't hear it.
My name is Rick Morse, and I operate Medmar Clinic at 334 East Olive Avenue in Fresno, California. It is a medical marijuana collective. In 2008, I began operating Medmar Clinic with a business license from the city of Fresno. Not long after that, we began donating money to the Pavarello House and the Rescue Mission as part of our establishment of our 501(c)(3). We also donated money to the Police Activities League, and we established what we call our Homeward Project, where we brought services to homeless people in the city of Fresno in the camps that weren't otherwise getting services through the Pavarello and the Rescue Mission. In February of 2011, I was invited by then-city Attorney Rob Schultz to help participate in the writing of Morro Bay's Medical Marijuana Ordinance, and it is a great ordinance. They put a lot of work into it, and it is, by and large, a very good ordinance. The only problem is there's some portions missing out of it that need to be included. The other, the other thing that we discussed in 2011 was the number-one concern for the city of Morro Bay. They were worried that patients or otherwise people smoking marijuana would be downed by the embarcadero on the beaches, or otherwise where you would have tourists. What I mentioned to the city council and the city attorney at that time was that we would be willing to sponsor a patient park, where that would be the only place in the city of Morro Bay that would be lawful to smoke outside of your home. In August of 2014, we invited the city of Fresno, City Police Department, and the city council on a tour of our collective. Sergeant Wilson from the Fresno Police Department attended the tour. It took about an hour long, and it was my impression he was quite impressed. October 2014, we provided the invitations to the county for the same tour. We met with the Health Department, and we established a scholarship program for county patients who couldn't afford the recommendations. And we also established what we call a compassionate use protocol to help allow these patients to get low-cost or free medication that can't afford it. What I'm attempting to do today is just simply establish communication. It's been a while since I've spoken to the city council about medical marijuana. I'm actually the one that dropped off the packet. This is what we call our tour package, and in the tour package is a copy of my business license, the seller's permit. We do pay taxes, even though we're seeking a 501(c)(3). The copy of the city tour, the copy of the county tour. There's a form in here that has a list of all the videos that are required viewing for the staff at the collective. And we are all volunteer, by the way. The next is a list from Dr. Todd McArria. It's the international-
I'm going to have to ask you to wrap it up here.
Oh, okay. What I do have in here, in this packet, is a sample ordinance for the county of Fresno. This was based dynamically on the Morro Bay ordinance, so it is similar to it. Behind that is a list of recommendations on how to complete the ordinance, and behind that is a copy of Assembly Bill 1894, which is the state law in 2016 that's going to provide for recreational use. And I'm hoping that the city of Morro Bay would like to be prepared. I would love to be able to have more communications with you in the future, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
If you have any questions, feel free to give me a call. My card is in the file.
Thanks, Mr. Morse. Anybody else for public comment?
Greetings, council staff, folks watching over. My name is Dawn Beatty, and I live in Morro Bay. And Dr. Herring, you mentioned that putting unused medication in the trash was irresponsible. I thought putting it in the toilet was irresponsible, that you're supposed to put in the trash. So, I'm hoping maybe you could use as an opportunity to tell us what we should do with unused medication. Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. Anybody else for a public comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment, bring it back to council. Any response from council?
Dawn, thank you. Thank you for that question. I'd be happy to answer that. There is available commercially right now a charcoal packet that's called a Medication Disposal System. It is available in three different sizes, and will allow you to take medications, both oral, including oral liquid, as well as some of the patches that they make. Put them into the packet, close off the packet, seal it off, and that will render the medication unable to be adsorbed into any other system, and also renders it ineffective in terms of if somebody got into it and took it. That is the only acceptable way right now that the waste management organization is accepting it in the trash. Other than that, the only other way has been to drop them off at the local police station, which has been a burden to our staff. And we're happy now that pharmacies that do become licensed, especially to receive the drop-off stations, will actually have a drop-off station, like a deposit box for your bank, and you simply can bring your medication in, drop it into the drop-off box. It slides down. We don't even have access to it as pharmacies. And then, it is picked up by special handlers for waste management, and that is the way, the best way to dispose of it. So, in the absence of using the charcoal system, which is available now, the only other way to dispose of it would be through these types of systems of collection. Thanks for asking.
Thanks, John. Anybody else? Christine?
I just want, thank you for all your public comments tonight. I wanted to comment on the bucket of butts that Mr. Davis spoke about. I saw recently there were some signs put up, I think recently, but perhaps I didn't notice, about holding under the handrail. Maybe there was a reason we put up some new signs encouraging people to use handrails on stairs. I'm assuming it may be something to do with risk management. But I'm wondering, maybe some follow-up could be mentioned, and the Rec and Parks Commission could perhaps discuss at some point, or I don't know if we want to ask staff to investigate signage. I think we do, several years ago, pass the no smoking in public parks ordinance, but I don't know how enforcement's been, or if we have signs. Just a little feedback on that. I think it seems to be something simple, but if we're picking up that many butts, it might be something we need to address.
Yes.
Whoever wants to, yeah.
In Chapter 9, Point 24, talks about smoking is banned in all public places, so it's not just in parks, it's everywhere. And there's a section on what the signs need to look like, what the letter height needs to be, and they're placed at the discretion of the public services- to be, and they're placed at the discretion of the Public Services Director. So I guess that's me, where these signs are going to go. So we can look at... We have some signs around our public buildings, like this one, City Hall, Public Services, Community Center, and we can get the similar signs where it has been an issue in the public places. I don't know if we want them every 50 feet along the sidewalk, but where it has become an issue, we can remind folks that smoking is prohibited in all public places.
Okay. I'm sure that I will trust your discretion on posting signage, but thanks.
Noah, did you have something?
Yeah. I would like to follow up on Ms. Johnson's comments, and I think this would be a good topic for the Citizens Beautification and Heritage Committee. I know Damaris Hansen, our Stormwater Management Coordinator for the city, will be there, and I think there's an obvious nexus between stormwater management and trying to keep pollutants out of the bay and this topic. So we could probably touch base there at the meeting as well, and maybe identify a couple of key spots and recommendations from the committee for staff, and they can follow up from there. I'll plan on adding that to the agenda.
Okay, great. Good discussion. And with that, that'll conclude our public comment portion of the agenda. Thanks very much, and we can move on to consent agenda. We have five items on consent, and we do open up public comment for any items on consent. So anybody that'd like to speak to items on consent agenda may do so now, public comment will be open. Seeing none, I'll close public comment for the consent agenda. And anybody that'd like to pull any items, or is there a motion to approve on the consent agenda?
I would like to pull A3 for a brief comment.
A3. Anything else? Seeing none. Take a motion to approve items A1, A2, A4, and A5.
Still moved?
We have a motion by Mr. Heding, a second by Ms. Johnson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries 5... Excuse me, 4-0. Pardon me, 4-0. A3. Noah?
Yes, A3 is part of our Morro Bay Visitor Center Agreement with Chamber Commerce. Just reviewed the agreement, and I'm definitely in support. I did have one suggested inclusion on Page 2 of 6 of the agreement. Item number 8 speaks to the free mobile app that the Chamber's going to be developing that, as we've all talked about, being a great idea and provide a lot of benefit. I did want to have some information or language in there, and I think this is going to happen either way, but it would be good to have some language in there speaking to the inclusion of pertinent governmental operations information to be available on that app. An example would be the Morro Bay Transit Program, County Transit Program, and so forth. I know the Chamber's planning on including that, but I didn't see anything in there specific to government information being available as well as it's appropriate from the Chamber's perspective and their management of it, and from the city staff's recommendations on what would be helpful there. So I'm not sure exactly if we want to get into wordsmithing that in, or if I could just generally ask for that to be included.
Do we have any response from that?
Either way, you can wordsmith or give us that general idea, and then we'll do the wordsmithing.
I think I'd prefer the second of those two options, so... Thank you. Okay, so I will move approval of item A3 with an inclusion in the Visitor Center Agreement under item 8 to include within the mobile app pertinent governmental operations information.
Great.
Is that city or city and county governmental?
I'm thinking it'd be probably effective and important to keep both available.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Smuckler.
I will second that.
Second by Mr. Heding. Any further discussion? Great addition. Thanks, Noah. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries 4-0. That concludes our consent agenda, and we have one public hearing item, and per policies, our public hearing won't start until 7:00 p.m. So we have the ability at this time to, with council approval, to move to item C1. So need consensus on opening up unfinished item, item C1, which would be the adoption of ordinance 594. I get some consensus on that?
Yes.
Okay, great. And with that, we'll, looking at the clock, we'll open up our next item of business is item C1. Under unfinished business, the adoption of ordinance number 594, amending various sections of Chapter 3.08 of the Morro Bay Municipal Code relating to contract authority and purchasing process. And recommendation is to adopt the ordinance after the reading and title only, and waiving further reading. Ms. Layton?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm going to be delivering again the same PowerPoint that I did last time with small changes. So this is the changes to the contract authority, and what we are doing, why we are doing this, and what changed. And this has to do with the changes that we're making to the municipal code. We're amending the Morro Bay Municipal Code, Chapter 3.08. Since 1979, five amendments have been made to this chapter, and it's good business to update procedures. It improves our operations. It keeps us up to date with what's happening with, since we're a general government city, we have to keep up with, or we want to keep up with, the regulations that the state changes and that they make. It also removes some unnecessary provisions. It establishes a purchase order system, which I'm still excited about, and it will, which will improve our internal controls on expenditures. So what changed? Section 3.08.060 requisitions was removed. Section 3.08.080 was rewritten to establish a purchase order system that requires a city purchase order for all expenditures. And there are some exemptions for real property, utilities, governmental agency payments, and claims and litigations. Section 3.08.100, formal contract procedure, that's been, that's going to require a written contract for purchases of supplies of equipment in excess of $50,000. It used to be $10,000. And it also changes it to not just the lowest responsible bidder, but the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. Section 3.08.110, open market procedure has been rewritten. It allows our city manager or written designee to sign contracts for purchases of supplies or equipment from the same vendor of $50,000 or less in the open market. It also dispenses with bid processes for purchases of supplies and equipment from the same vendor for $2,500 or less. That used to be 500, and that's a pretty low number. And it also requires a minimum of three quotations, awarding to the lowest responsive and responsible quotation. Again, what else changed? Section 3.08.140, informal bid procedures have been re-titled and updated. The new title is Informal Public Project Bid Procedures, and that's updated to the Public Contracts Code, limits of $175,000. It used to be $100,000. 3.08.170, a Y... Blah, excuse me. Award of Contracts has been expended. City manager or written designee is authorized to award and sign contracts and purchase orders for supplies and equipment up to $125,000. City council approval of the expenditure by adoption or amendment to the budget is required. So we're not going to just run out and be spending $125,000 that you don't know about. The city manager or written designee may amend a contract up to the lesser of $50,000 or 25% of the contract purchase order amount. And again, that's going to be something that we're going to either have in the budget or we're going to bring to you if it causes some significant budget impacts. The recommendation is for you to accept public comment on this item and make a motion to adopt ordinance 594. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Layton. Appreciate that. Any questions for staff at this point? Seeing none to my left and to my right. I'll open up for public comment for anybody that'd like to speak to this item. Public comment is open. Seeing no public comment, we'll bring it back to council for discussion. This is the second presentation of this at this time. Is there any discussion from council? To my left or right? John, would you like to give it up?
One, I wanted to thank staff for reviewing, updating, and making something that was less relevant, much more relevant, and in line with, I think, other communities. Second, I think this brings increased accountability into a number of systems, which I appreciate greatly. Also, I think it also brings increased responsibility to staff, for which I think ceding control and upgrading or updating the amounts and the limits are quite appropriate for today's dollars. And so, thank you for your succinct review and bringing us up to the current standard with regard to this ordinance.
Thanks, John. Noah?
No, well said, Mr. Heding.
Christine?
Yes, I agree exactly with Mr. Heding's comments, and I also appreciate that we see these things now, time to time, bringing the ordinances back, refreshing them to make sure they're up to date. So I appreciate seeing it on the agenda when it's appropriate, so thanks very much.
Thanks, everyone. And also extend a thanks to staff on this. This isn't... We have been seeing other ordinances come to council within the last year or so, appropriately so, so it's great to revisit all those and update those, so appreciate that. And with that, we'll take a motion to move to adopt ordinance 594, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Morro Bay, California, amending various sections of Chapter 3.08 of the Morro Bay Municipal Code relating to contract authority and the purchasing process, and waive further reading.
Is that a motion?
That is the motion.
Second.
Say a motion by Mayor Irons, a second by Councilmember Johnson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None. Motion carries 4-0. That concludes item C1. We still have a few minutes to go here, so if you want to just keep clipping along, we can move on to new business. New business would be item D1. I get support and consensus for that? Great. Let's do that, and we'll move on to item... Item D1. Item D1 is Introduction and First Reading of Ordinance Number 595, amending the various provisions of Title V of the Morro Bay Municipal Code relating to business taxes. And this, again, is also Ms. Layton.
Thank you very much. There we go. So this is my PowerPoint on the changes to the Morro Bay Municipal Code Business Tax. And this is ordinance number 595. And again, what are we doing? Why are we doing it? And what's changed? We're amending the Morro Bay Municipal Code, Chapter 5.04 through 5.08. We're changing... Many of the changes are globally related to changing business license to business tax and also business tax certificate. We're correcting and clarifying language. We're incorporating previous changes adopted by... I forgot to fill in the ordinance number that we adopted, December 13, 2004, but it would have been, I want to say, 589 and 590. 589 was the amnesty, 590 was the low revenue. And they've been... Those ordinances have been incorporated in this. And we're also adding new low-income category for grocery receipts under $4,000. Why are we doing this? Again, it's good business. You should revisit your laws, procedures, and when necessary, do updates. The changes incorporate previous council actions and also recommendations from public. We had some extensive public input on this municipal code section, and also staff. And the big one is removing the word license, as we are not a licensing authority, but we are a taxing authority. So what's changed? Well, again, changes to all the chapters is license fee and license tax to business tax to consistently indicate this is a tax and not a fee. Also, changing license to certificate. And we've actually changed that on the business tax certificates that we've been issuing since the September, the August renewals. We're going to be changing 5.04.010 definitions, and we're adding business tax certificate to describe the document issued by the city. We're also adding independent contractor, and we want to bring that one to light so that people who are out there working in a business, but they are not a W-2 employee, so they understand that they are an independent contractor and subject to our business tax 5.04.050 was formally license and tax payment required. We split that into two sections for clarity of the requirements. 5.04.060, again, the concepts in the previous version, we separated for clarity into paragraphs A through E. So it's just bringing them out, making them a little clearer. We've done that in several areas. 5.04.065 was added to address businesses without fixed locations in the city to clarify that there's no employee calculation required if you are not, you don't have a fixed place of business in the city. 5.04.080 is the constitutional apportionment. This was expanded with another paragraph to address an appeal process for complaints if someone feels that we've been unfairly, you know, burdening them. 5.04.150 is a determination of average number of employees. The annual hours have been changed from 2,000 to 2,080. And as you all know, 2,080 is the standard full-time equivalent. So that was very confusing for a lot of people when they were trying to do 2,080 and realizing that we were using 2,000. 5.04.275, that's the amnesty that's being removed from the Morro Bay Municipal Code. That was established by ordinance 589, and it was for the period... It went from the period December 13, 2014, and expired on March 13, 2015. 5.04.320, concessions have been changed to... The title's been changed to independent contractor. The language in this section is specific to that type of business, so it made sense to clarify the title. 5.08.040, we added farmers' markets and special events to that section. 5.08.080, we just split the various concepts in that section to A through F for clarity. Instead of having just one big fat paragraph, we cut them up so that you could actually read them better and understand them a little easier. 5.08.110, we added the ability for nonprofits to be exempt from taxes by council action. 5.08.150, again, concepts have been separated for clarity. 5.08.170, this is the real estate section. We separated the concepts for clarity, and language has been added to point those who are not realtors or property managers to Section 5.08.020 was the guidance for that business type. And 5.08.020 is tax on undesignated professions. 5.08.220 adds a low-revenue exemption for business whose grocery receipts are under And we also have some additional items that we have clarified before I read this slide. Those changes are on your dais, and they're also at the back of the room on the table. We made a change to Page 3 of the document, of the change document, subsection E. The new language reads, notwithstanding the foregoing, "Low-income businesses, as defined in Section 5.08.220, shall only require one business certificate, tax certificate, provided that if more than one low-income business is operated at the same address by the same business tax holder, then all those businesses shall be listed on that one business tax certificate." The second change is on Page 7 of the staff report, subsection A. "The filing of an application for a business tax certificate shall also be considered an application for a permit from the chief of police when the business to be operated is any of the following: one, carnival..." is any of the following: one, carnival; two, circus or menagerie; three, money lender or pawnbroker; four, masseuse; five, tent show; six, amusement parlor; seven, penny arcade or playland; or eight, private patrol service." And the final one is changed to page eight, section 5.08.030, "Single and multifamily dwellings, motels, hotels, rest homes, rooming houses, hospitals, and sanitariums." The actual paragraph has been changed to say each one single and multifamily dwellings. That's the only change that was made to that. We added the word "single," because we had taken that out, and we were concerned that that would eliminate the area that we had been using for people who have single-family residences and rent them out. Those are the end of those changes. We'd like you to review and comment on Ordinance 595, open and accept public comment, and then make a motion for introduction and first reading by number and title only of Ordinance 595. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Great, Ms. Layton. Thanks for the report. And with that, I'll open it for questions from council. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes, thank you. We certainly talked about this a lot in the past year or so, so it's good to see it back in code form. So, I had a few questions, but this one's on my mind. Can you explain, or perhaps Chief Christie can explain, just when you read the change to page seven, just kind of tell us exactly why that kicks the police into action? I'm just curious. It sounds really interesting.
Most of those are situations where we want to fingerprint these people. And so, we want that because we want to know who's coming into our town for these particular types of businesses, especially with the massage parlors, as they used to be called. We felt that calling them masseuses was a little bit, you know, more, you know, just a better way to say it. But they need to be fingerprinted, and that's, I think, the biggest reason why they need to go through the vetting with the police chief, also with the private patrols, because they're driving around. She's going to want to inspect their cars. Yeah, I think that's -- and then, of course, pawnbrokers. She wants to make sure that they're keeping all their records straight.
Right, great. It's a really interesting group of businesses, or potential businesses.
And if I may, that's not a change. That's currently what's in the code.
Right, exactly. But when you pull it out like that, it's just sort of fun to ask about it. Okay, great. And a few questions, then, about the code. So, we had a lot of public comment a while ago from our real estate professionals. Mostly, we heard from folks from out of town. So, does this update resolve some things for them, or at least give them closure on what it is the city's expectations will be?
I believe it does. I believe it provides more clarity to them so that they understand exactly what is expected of the realtors and the brokers' realtors. Anyone who's performing business in that profession knows that they do have to come in and have a license when they -- or business tax certificate when it's required. I do feel that this does address all those concerns.
Okay, great. And then, last question. Have you been able to move through some of those administrative appeals that ended up on your desk when people were appealing? And sort of where do we stand with that? And are we still -- we're obviously still reaching out to businesses, and how's that going?
We are still reaching out to the realtors in town and out of town. Most of the realtors in town wanted to wait to make any decisions on what they were going to do for this code section to be updated and for the update to pass. So, I think we're going to be hearing more from them. We're continuing to reach out to the out-of-town people and following up with more letters to try to encourage them to come in, especially the ones that came to us initially and filed for amnesty. We want to let them know that their amnesty period is expiring on August 31st.
And then, obviously, we've done a great deal of legal review that this is going to be -- that we are able to stand behind the policies for the real estate field.
I feel comfortable that we can.
And then, in general, a lot of -- we had a lot of business folks filing appeals that were not only in the real estate profession, but Ms. Layton, have you pretty much worked through all of those?
Yes, we have. We've been very diligent about working on those and making sure that we address everyone who has filed an appeal. Most of the ones that did, we've also been working with MAS on them to find out what led MAS to find them. That's MAS, Municipal Auditing Services, for those who don't remember. It's been a little while since we've talked about them. We generally, when we get an appeal, we contact MAS, ask them how they found that person, what got them to send out their letter. A lot of times, it's a license that somebody forgot to, you know, to terminate, a seller's permit that they still have, that they say, oh, you know, I didn't mean, you know, I'm not selling anymore, but they didn't close it out. So, then, we can let them know. They still have the ability to file with us a written statement, notarized written statement, saying that they've not done business in Morro Bay.
Okay, great. Thank you. Those are my questions.
Thanks, Christine. John, Mr. Heding?
Yes, indeed, thank you. Ditto on my comments for the thank yous and the kudos for updating a very difficult document, if you read through it, and capturing, I think, the essence of a lot of the input that was not only given by business owners, but also the community in general and the council. Just a couple of questions. The first is, do you have any idea of what the dollar impact may well be in terms of the dollars that might endure to the city as a result of the changes that will take place on an annual basis, possibly?
In particular, the businesses that are going to be exempt by the $4,000, they're very small businesses. That's a very small -- I mean, it's a very wide section, but it's a very small dollar amount, so that's not going to be a big issue to the city. And we did add some precautions in there to make sure that anyone who is identified in the code will not qualify for this. So, a realtor won't qualify. A contractor won't qualify. There are a lot of people that won't qualify for the $4,000 exemption because they have a section that spells out what their business is and how their -- and what their business tax is. So, that is very helpful. The -- we really were targeting that for the small hobbyist, the person that's doing, you know, jewelry in their yard, you know, in their backyard or in their garage, or they're doing a little bit of painting, and we wanted them to be able to be exempt. So, I don't think the impact on us is going to be great.
Yeah, and I'll apologize. I wasn't referring to that specific piece, but the overall program changes what the dollar impact might be to the city. In other words, there are going to be probably more business license dollars, or I should say, tax dollars collected. Do we have an idea from a budgetary standpoint? Are we talking about maybe $50,000 more dollars to the city, or $20,000 less, or what the range of income might be?
Based on the forecast from management partners, we raised the business license tax revenue up about $150,000. We anticipate that with the new businesses that we're going to be capturing, that could easily be the benefit to the city. It's not going to be millions of dollars. It'll peak in the initial years that MAS is still active, but then it's going to stabilize. And we'll probably be easily in the $500,000 range from here on out.
Good. That's what I was looking for, kind of at that range. And my last question, or maybe a comment, would be for businesses, it would be good for the city to remind them, should they be audited, what indeed they would have to produce? Because I think in the future, as we become more astute and aware of these issues, but also as we analyze and review them more frequently, we're going to, as business people, occasionally be asked to produce information. And so, possibly a guide sheet of what the city would expect if you were audited. And I know we're doing the MAS audit, but with the implementation of this new document or ordinance, I think it would be good to have that general guide available for business people.
And that is something that I can put in the tax collector's letter, and I can add that little piece to let them know that if they were to be audited, these are the type of records they need to look at. And of course, MAS, when they contact an individual, they do let them know, we need to look at this, 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 and this. So, they have a pretty good laundry list, I understand, of things that they want to look at. So, yeah, I can definitely put that in the tax collector's letter.
Good. Yeah, I was thinking of maybe new businesses that would come in also that would need to know, but I think it would be important to do that. So, thank you. Great job.
Thanks, Mr. Heding. We will be returning to item B1, our public hearing. I think we'll get this wrapped up pretty soon, but we haven't forgotten. Noah, Mr. Smucker?
Yes, thank you. Just want to ask a couple of questions regarding the low-income thresholds that were introduced, page 12 of 14, section 41. And I just, if you can, remind me, I'm really glad to see the low-income exemption, but remind me why exactly we don't have information about the low-revenue threshold. I know we have some great information online about that and how people can apply if they're making less than $12,000 annually for a reduced-cost business license. But I don't see any language in here specific to the low-revenue threshold, and was wondering why we would not include that as well. We have the $4,000 and below exemption, and then the low-revenue threshold. If you can, just clarify why we wouldn't include that as well.
If I may, it's in the previous -- this is only subsection C and D. It's in A and B of that same section. The reference to the $12,000 is in that section.
Okay, good. Just want to confirm that. Thank you. And in that same section, have we included any language about the poverty index of the Health -- Federal Health and Human Services Poverty Index to give us the ability to attempt to match that and avoid having to come back and adjust that and, you know, provide the guide of what we're trying to establish with that?
Unfortunately, the city can't pass an ordinance that says, our law is going to say X. If somebody else passes another law that says X, it has to come back to you anyway. So, that's why we don't -- we're just leaving the $12,000, and if we need to change it, we'd come back to you.
Okay. I think that works for me. And then, just briefly, you have some good information in here about what the process is for applying for the low-income exemption of $4,000 or less. I think it'd be a good opportunity right now to just take advantage of this and briefly describe what it is that someone can do to achieve that and have the exemption.
Well, for the $4,000 exemption, if a business feels that they are not making $4,000 in grocery receipts annually, they don't have to come in at all. We don't need to see them. They don't need to contact us until they make $4,000 and $4,001, or actually $4,000 because it's below. So, we would, at that point, then, they will come in, they should come in and talk to us, and then they would be qualifying under the low-revenue business section that's under $12,000. So, there's not going to be, you know, there's no requirement for them to come in and talk to us. They're good to go if they're under $4,000 a year.
And as I mentioned, that application for under $12,000 for the low-income threshold, that's available on the website under Administrative Services.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, excellent job on that. Those were my questions.
Thank you, thank you. Ms. Layton, when does the MAS contract expire?
It's my understanding that we have another two years with them for them to go out. It was a three-year contract for them to go and look and find businesses that are in their initial blush, not compliant. As I said with someone else, you know, this could be somebody who has failed to close a seller's permit or something like that. So, it's just the fact that they're finding something that's open that indicates you could possibly be in business. And so, they've already gone and contacted all of the Morro Bay residents that they found on their first attempt. They are now going after -- going out and contacting out-of-towners. So, they will get our business license. They'll get polls from our business license system twice a year. They'll take a look at it. They'll match it to their records. And then, if someone hasn't done what, you know, what they should have done, paid the taxes that they felt they should have paid, they'll contact us, ask us if they need to contact the taxpayer again. If we say yes, they'll contact the taxpayer again and say, thank you for your payment. However, you didn't do, you know, you didn't quite comply with our requirements.
Okay. I think I heard you say they've contacted all the residents of Morro Bay. Do you mean residents or businesses?
Residents and businesses.
Residents and businesses, okay. Thank you. That concludes all -- any questions I have. At this time, I'll open it up for public comment for anybody who'd like to speak to this item. Public comment is open. Please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close public comment, bring it back to council for discussion and deliberation, and look for a motion. Any further discussion to my right? John? Noah? None? Christine? Then I would move--
Mr. Mayor, before you do that, I apologize. In doing the hectic work we did today, I just noticed a error in the number. On page 12, the subsection C, the first subsection C on page 12, that says, "Any person who owns or rents property within the city and is not subject to this section," which is the real estate section, "shall be subject to section 5.08.020." That should be 030.
Then I'd make a motion that we move for introduction and first reading of Ordinance 595 with the stated correction of .030 that our city attorney pointed out. In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Morro Bay, California, amending various provisions of Title V of the Morro Bay Municipal Code relating to business taxes--
And these.
-- and the corrections that were listed, changes to page three, subsection E, changes to page seven, subsection A, and change to page eight, subsection 5.08.030. And that is the motion.
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Heding. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, none. Motion carries four zero. That will conclude item D1. We'll move back to our public hearing item. Would you guys entertain just a five-minute recess before we get started on this? I kind of feel like we might be involved in this for a little while, or I know you guys have waited here for a few minutes now. Is everybody okay with that? Just a five-minute recess, and we'll be right back? Thanks very much.
Thank you, Christine.
Good job.
Good job.
I like it.
I want to know, like, what is that?
I want to do a background on it.
Actually, I have no idea.
Welcome back. We'll get started with our public hearing. Tonight, we have our public hearing is a conditional use permit, UPO 058. It's a revised concept plan and precise plan approval for land side improvements, Phase Two, associated with a previously approved concept plan for Harbor Hut, Great American Fish Company, GAVCO, and Morro Bay Landings, formerly known as Verge's Redevelopment Project. Phase Two improvements will include demolition of the existing Morro Bay Landings building and existing Dockside Three Restaurant building, with new construction of a two-story commercial visitor-serving building, along with observation deck, outdoor seating area, public access improvement, as well as parking, driveway improvements, and a 568-square-foot pocket park. And presenting this today will be our associate planner, Cindy Jason. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. So, as stated, this is review of conditional use permit, UPO 058. This is--
of the existing Morro Bay Landings building and existing Dockside 3 restaurant building with new construction of a two-story commercial visitor-serving building along with observation deck, outdoor seating area, public access improvement, as well as parking driveway improvements, and a 568-square-foot pocket park. And presenting this today will be our associate planner, Cindy Jason. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. So as stated, this is review of conditional use permit, UPO 058. This is Phase 2 of the approval of the use permit. Staffs prepared a number of slides to walk you through this project. The address is located at 1215 in Barkadero, and pursuant to our Morro Bay Municipal Code, properties that are in a PD or plan development overlay require both concept and precise plan approval. Normally, the precise plan would stop at the planning commission level. This project has changes to the concept plan, which according to our code requirements require, excuse me, city council approval. The project was reviewed by planning commission on May 19, 2015, and in your staff report, you will see that they have forwarded a favorable recommendation with conditions to city council to modify the concept plan and approve the final precise plan. Okay, there we go. So this, as you can tell by the title on the agenda, has a very long history. Long title, long history. Just to give you a brief overview, the last time that the city council saw this particular use permit was on May 12, 2008, when the council approved concept plan for the overall conditional use permit. The project before you and the description just describes the landside improvements that are a part of Phase 2. So you should have gotten from the city clerk a paper copy of an satellite image that looks like this, and there are extra copies over there by the AGP table. This covers more than just the entitled UPO 058 area. It actually goes all the way north to the North T Pier and Coast Guard buildings, and then all the way south to South T Pier. So that's just meant for illustration purposes. So after the city council approved the concept plan, then Coastal Commission approved the coastal development permit on June 10, 2009, came back to planning commission to approve Phase 1 of the conditional use permit in June of 2010. There were some modifications to the docks, which I'll show you in some subsequent slides in 2013. And then, as I just said earlier, in May of 2015, planning commission approved the precise plan. This is a unique project because the way that it was approved was one master, excuse me if you will, conditional use permit to cover 22 lease sites and three separate business owners. It's been approved that way to entitle that master area. It was actually first presented to the city in 2004 as a way to master plan a sizable section of the northern waterfront area, and it was thought that this would make for a better design and overhaul cohesive plan. Since then, though, there have been separate, as you can see, multiple phases and building permits issued on the, on the parts that have received their approvals. Hopefully, my staff report will summarize this when we're all done. Okay, so visually, this is what the phasing looks like. So this is on the first page of the plans. You will see in the orange area, this is the matter before you tonight. It is the Phase 2 of the conditional use permit. It's landside improvements only. There are no dock improvements proposed tonight. Phase 1 included the GAFCO remodel and then the docks there. So on the screen, you'll see Phase 1A and Phase 1B. Those are, that was the portion of the precise plan that planning commission approved in 2010. And then GAFCO doesn't have a circle around it, my apologies, but it is right here, and that 2010 precise plan approval was for that remodel. So, okay, before I go on. So when Coastal Commission approved the coastal development permit in 2009, they made numerous conditions. But most notably, one of those conditions was that the applicant changed the design and architecture of the building. They felt that the design was a modern design that was not consistent with the fishing village character of Morro Bay and also as envisioned in the waterfront master plan. They specifically said that the building be modified to reflect a working dock, nautical maritime theme, and this goes into, I go into further discussion in this on page 2 of the staff report. So here you will see, and you'll still be a better image later on when you see the visual simulation. This is the original approved elevations from 2008 shown here. So this is that what Coastal Commission thought was the modern design. The top image is the east elevation. That would be if you were in the street looking at the building. And then the middle image is the west from the waterside, and then the bottom is the north. So this is their project as they propose it today. And as stated in the subject, the project description includes demolition and reconstruction of that existing Morro Bay Landing building, which when it was originally approved was known as Verge's. The project architect is here tonight, and he'll go into some more details about the architectural style and how he's revised that. But this, this is their proposal that, to meet the Coastal Commission conditions. There have also been some other changes to the building. Originally, the project was two-story throughout. Now only a portion of the second story, or, excuse me, a portion of the building is two-story, and then on the left, you can see a portion of the building will be one-story. There are some slight open area increases, open view area, second-floor office spaces gotten smaller. There are some larger view deck areas and some other miscellaneous changes. The next few slides you'll see, oh, I guess I was, okay, the next few slides you'll see are the differing elevations. This would be from the waterside. You will see here on the right, this is Harbor Hut. This is the existing pole sign that's talked about in the staff report, which I'll get to later. And then, as you go north, this is the more heavier commercial fishing area. And south elevation, this would be looking from Harbor Hut, looking north. And then the other side. In this elevation, you do see the dock layout here, but in this project, it is just the landside that is proposed for approval. So here is that better, original simulation I promised you. This is what was approved in 2008. This shows, this is a two-story building. This was how Verge's was going to be redeveloped back when Verge's was still the applicant. Shows the two-story building. And then, of course, as you've already seen, the elevation, this is how they have revised it to meet the Coastal Commission's conditions. Okay, and then I have a couple of slides here so that you can see the view of the backside of the building. So here you are looking at the docks. And I will point out that these docks right here, these are docks that staff refers to as Phase 1A. These are part of the docks that were approved, same use permit, part of planning commission's precise plan approval in 2010. So they have inaugurated the permit via the building permits, and these docks have been finalized. So I just thought I would point that out because we have already started to see improvements from this use permit that was approved so long ago. And then here is the proposed view. So I'll just go back and forth so you can kind of take that in. So they're showing here, of course, a boat in slip. And for scale, you can kind of compare it to the surrounding buildings there, existing and proposed. And then, moving on to planning commission's recommendation. So when planning commission looked at this in May, they reviewed the project, and they looked at it as Phase 2. They looked at it for compliance naturally with city's general plan, local coastal plan, waterfront master plan. They came up with four conditions and appropriately looked at the issue of bayside lateral access. That was discussed in detail in the staff report. Condition number six, conditions the project to add continuous bayside lateral access, and I'll just paraphrase here, eight feet in width. Six and seven are very similar. That would provide for lateral access on the bayside of that building. So currently, the way that the building is designed is that it would only go halfway the length of the Morro Bay Landing building. And actually, so right here, you see there's that window there. There would be lateral access, and it would stop, and it would dead-end there into, this is retail, first-floor retail space. So planning commission said, "Well, it's very clearly spelled out in our city documents to provide for lateral access." And so they added condition six and seven that would require that this lateral access for pedestrians be extended so that they can make their way across. Condition number eight was regarding sighting of tables. And up here is the second-floor view deck. They conditioned it so that, to avoid the appearance that any tables on the second floor would be solely for restaurant customer use only, they added a condition to move those tables away from the northern and western side of that view deck. And then the fourth condition was that signs be added announcing public coastal access on or jason to the elevator at the bottom of the staircase leading to the second-floor view deck. They took serious consideration toward making sure that the public knew that there was public access on the second floor, finding ways to encourage them, even including table tent signs on the public tables so that there didn't give the appearance that those are only for restaurant use. Okay, so I'm gonna, so to illustrate the public access and information that staff has received since May, I have a series of four slides. I'm just going to walk you through so you can see what it looks like today, how it was approved, and, and what planning commission recommended. So generally speaking, this is what the existing public access looks like, the red line. I've only drawn the line on the lease site. So naturally, we have more access over here and over here, but that's outside of this particular conditional use permit. On the right here is Great American Fish Company. Here in the mitter, excuse me, here, right here is Harbor Hut. Of course, the red line, this box here says existing lateral access. And then this is the Morro Bay Landing building. As part of this particular approval tonight, the former Thai Boat building that's now occupied by Dockside 3, that would all, that's also included in the demolition, and I've called that out there, too. So this is how the project is currently approved for its dock configuration. So the yellow lines show where the head floats, finger slips, and the docks would be. I will point out here that these docks right here are the Phase 1A docks that you saw on the visual simulation just a moment ago. And then a portion of this project tonight also includes extending of the harbor walk there. Okay, let me catch up here on my slides. One thing that is important to point out, when this, and this is how the docks are approved by Coastal Commission, when this project was first approved and presented in 2008, 2007, the way the project was approved was that, the project was not required to provide lateral access because the city council, and actually also Coastal Commission, found that providing public access along the floating docks and the applicant paying its pro-rata fair share toward the harbor walk improvements, along with the other public access, met the requirement. And when I say that, because that's obviously not what the planning commission said in May, but what staff has learned since May is that it was, quite frankly, a really new and novel concept back in 2007 and 2008 that really set the bar for other cities with floating docks. Back in that time period, there was no projects that were approved where public access was on the floating docks. Coastal Commission thought it was a great idea. They were amazed, like, wow, you know, people could actually go on the docks, and they could be right there and have an intimate experience with water. And really, after this project was approved by Coastal, that experience started being replicated as conditions in other cities. So that was kind of a new thing then, and we're seeing that on other projects here in Morro Bay. So Coastal Commission, and the one other thing I wanted to point out, too, as, as regards to the way that planning commission looked at this and the way that the city looked at, excuse me, the way that planning commission looked at it in May, and then also the way that Coastal Commission looked at it, was that there are some constraints to providing for the lateral access. And before I go any further, I'll just move on to these, the next slide here. So what planning commission said, and I've alluded to this before, is the green line here is what planning commission said. They said, "Hey, you've got lateral access that dead-ends into this retail space. We want you to extend that and then connect over here." And so that's, that's what this shows. Since then, and I will get to this right now, this is that, since May, staff has had numerous conversations with the applicant and their representatives regarding some of the constraints to this project that staff feels, planning commission did not have this information to them as part of their deliberation. And so I'm going to go into that. But one of the key things is, sorry, I lost my train of thought here, is the numerous constraints to providing for the lateral access. So the LCP does provide for exceptions to providing continuous bayside lateral access where there are use conflicts, and that is discussed in the staff report. The way that this was looked at in 2008 is they identified at least three constraints. One, there was the vessel maneuverability between GAFCO and the South T Pier. There was this issue in this area right here where that is actually owned by DynaGee, so there was a constraint to providing continuous lateral access there. And then west of Morro Bay Landing, there are presence of eelgrass, which is a sensitive biological species that requires its own environmental setback requirements. And, okay, hold on a second. So in addition to that, and as discussed in the staff report, staff is recommending condition changes to the project. And in regards to condition six and seven concerning bayside lateral access, although the requirement for such access is clearly defined in the city's LCP and in the waterfront master plan, as I said, there are exceptions that allow for that. Other information that staff has found out is that with recent lease site modifications, there are new, there is a new business that's going into this area, or, excuse me, that is there, that furthers the fish processing activities. And so when staff looked at, since May, when staff looked at the project globally and looked at not just the Phase 2 area, but for the whole entire conditional use permit area, how to provide that lateral access, and does it make sense to route pedestrian traffic into that fish processing area, or would it make more sense to, okay, here we go, to route them, and the yellow line shows the staff recommendation. The blue line would be west of the existing Tognizini's building, and that could be a future option if the city wanted to explore potentially any amendments to waterfront master plan. That might be something that if tourists or visitors wanted to see the fishing operations up close. But in reviewing this larger vicinity area, it does seem to make more sense to route them there. Now, what staff is recommending is consistent with Coastal Commission's approval, and we did speak with Coastal Commission staff today, and actually for over a half an hour, discussing with Coastal Commission, planning commission's recommendations. Planning commission did not have the information that staff had, you know, even as of today, about this project, and went through that whole analysis with Coastal Commission, and then where we are today, and the fact that we have new business, a new business in that area that is Measure D compliant, and that, of course, is the primary goal of that area. Coastal Commission's response to staff was that they supported staff. They said that that was actually the same analysis that they went through back in 2008, is that, you know, they looked at this, that, yes, they would always want to see eight to 10 feet of lateral access. And although they really wanted to see access there west of Morro Bay Landings, when, when they looked at the whole project as a whole and globally, and looking at the floating docks, and that was a new concept back then, and then the harbor walk project that was starting, I think that was actually being constructed around '08, '09, that's how they were able to make the findings for consistency with the Coastal Act. So they were... So they were very supportive of that. And then, and then thirdly, the next recommendation by staff is to modify condition eight. And this condition relates to, and the applicant, their response letter, and you'll see that as Exhibit H in your staff report, but one of the things that was brought up is that although the condition requires that the tables be moved away from the edge of the view deck, there may be some concern that some folks may want to sit down, or may want to, you may have differing ability levels. And so staff is recommending that half of that view deck, or 50%, that's facing the bay, have tables that are located adjacent to the railing, with the remaining 50% of that view deck with maintaining eight foot clear at all times. And then, planning condition number three regarding the pole sign, staff, Planning Commission accepted staff's recommendation to condition the removal of that pole sign. Staff would just like to say that the pole sign is clearly inconsistent with the fishing village character of the waterfront master plan. Staff stands by that condition, and that is part of Planning Commission's recommendation. And then I just have a couple more slides. So in 2008, this is how the public access looked like, so if it was hard to read those satellite images, this is, might be a little bit easier or not. This shows the original dock configuration. And then here you will see, in 2013, they revised their floating dock configuration. Coastal Commission approved this, actually Army Corps approved it as well, found that it had actually less environmental impacts as regards to eelgrass. And, okay, so with that, staff would like to recommend that the city council accept the Planning Commission's favorable recommendation to revise the concept and approve final precise plan approval. With the staff recommendation to modify condition eight and the deletion of condition six and seven, if you accept staff's recommendation, Council Resolution 5715 is Planning Commission's full embodied recommendation, and so it would need to be approval of 5715 as modified. And with that, that concludes my presentation, and I am available for questions.
Great, thank you. Would it be appropriate to have the applicant come up and speak, and then we can start with questions there? It might be a little bit easier for everyone. Okay? With that, we'd invite the applicant to come up.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, my name is Bob Fowler. I represent, the applicant is actually MMBS LLC, the leaseholder on the project. First of all, I'd like to thank staff in helping us get through this process. We've had some disagreements, but everybody's worked on a very professional level, and I think, I think things have worked out actually fairly well. Especially I'd like to thank Dave, who's not here tonight. He was very helpful in putting it all together and bringing us together the table and resolving a lot of the issues that we were dealing with. Before we start, I'd like to introduce Gene Doughty. Gene is the architect on the project, and he's got a little presentation for you, kind of show you what the architecture is, how it was derived, and kind of put it into architect's kind of concept and language for you.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. Gene Doughty, 201 Main Street. As an architect and engineering contractor who has specialized in marine design and construction for more than 40 years, I have worked around, under, over, and under most of the Morro Bay waterfront. This would be a seagull's view of the overall waterfront, the Teapeers, GAFCO, Harbor Hut, the existing and scheduled floating harbor walk, our building site, the ice house, and of course, the power plant. This is the project site. To the north of this gangway, right above there, is an existing eelgrass, then the commercial fishermen's waterfront. The original approval design for this entire section, from the Coast Guard Building all the way to the South Teapeer, was master planned by Jim Mall. His ability for spatial relationships and user location cannot be questioned. Bob Fowler has asked me to keep those components of the proof plan, but just change the look of his project with a more maritime character than we are, that's all we are doing. Looking at the site from above the Embarcadero on the south side, as you can see, the existing harbor walk is in place, and to meet the Coastal Commission conditions, this is how we will change the look. In my 40 years-plus hands-on experience in marine work, first design function would be of pilings. Because of this instability of soil below, pilings play a vital role in the structural integrity of marine structures. Not only do they have to withstand normal loads in buildings, but must stand tidal waves, hurricanes, collision by ships, and the harsh marine environment. We propose to bring pilings up onto the landside on a 16-foot grid, what will provide human scale to work within. The second major design feature would be to the horizontal line, which reflects the horizon. If we were in the mountains, of course, we'd use inclined planes. We propose to install heavy timber treated beams to reflect this function, provide exposed structural elements. We then propose to cross those beams with additional heavy timber members to create a stable framework to work within. The major design characteristic would be to secure laminated curved beams to the roof structure. These reflect the movements of the water, the graceful sheer lines of our boats, the catenary curves of our sailboats and lines. Pretty cool, huh? The second-story step beams allow greater fenestration, a separation of the upper and lower units, and breaks up the massing of the building. Within this framework, we propose to relocate the sport fishing business, a maritime retail area, and public accessible restrooms on the first floor. These elements will allow the user to experience the feeling of a maritime structure surrounding To access the second floor, we will install a vertical element of a public elevator and public stairs. That'd be in that area right through there. In compliance with the Coastal Commission, in compliance with the approved plans, we will provide a large public viewing area on the second floor overlooking the waterfront, and an additional public stairs for this area, which is above the required electrical station. That area down right through there. Capping the roof structure will be colored architectural styled metal roofing. We will also include tinted glass railings with bird stripe deterrent. As viewed from the south, from the south Embarcadero, the siding will be hardy plank with staggered vertical lapping to additionally articulate the building. Stone facing around the stairs and the elevator shall reflect the rock. Looking from the middle of the Embarcadero, with an expanded view from the removal of the Dockside Three Restaurant, shown is the pocket park, which is over here, and the relocated and widened driveway for the W62 wide truck bodies that have to come through there. Stamp hardscape to be placed around the building to establish the tradition, to establish the tradition, the transition from pedestrian area to vehicular area. Because right now, when people walk, you're just kind of like, you don't know where you're walking, you're walking in the road. Be nice to have some hardscape there. As you enter the sport fishing site below, note the signage that is part of the exposed beams. That says public access right, right there. We will create negative spaces that welcome the public. We also will provide additional benches and some modest drought-resistant landscaping. The projected beams shall provide a great interaction of light and shadow, as well as increase the expression of the building. As you enter into the building, the view from the interior should allow the user, the expanded view shot of the bay beyond. The curved beams will reflect interior ship designs and feeling of maritime movement. Access for patrons and the public are provided on the seaward side. Once again, a view from the parking lot on the north. Here, I'd like to remind the council that this is not a new concept. We're keeping all the same components to the original Jim Mall's plan, we've just changed the look of it. And I like to view projects from the waterside. This is the building, this is one of the buildings that the first, first, few first impressions that voters will see when they enter our harbor. I think that it should say, "We, Morro Bay, honor and respect our maritime heritage and are proud to show it." And I'd be glad to answer any questions about architecture.
Thanks, Gene. Pretty cool. Cindy, I wonder if I could put that on the overhead, just to...
I kind of wanted to bring you up to speed on where we are with the overall project, not just the development of it, but the new tenants and the new businesses that are out there now. And we forgot to put one of these in our slide presentation, so Cindy was kind enough to let us use this one. The, to be more exact about where the public access is down on the docks, this is where, this is the South Teapeer here. And what's envisioned with this public access is that it run all the way through here and across here, and then back up the gangway into the Morro Bay Landing area here. Right now, we have, Cindy mentioned, the fish processing business here. This is Rob Sights with South Bay Wild, and Rob has just completed his interior improvements and started processing fish there. He's asked me to look at the possibility of being able to do some retail sales out of there. We have an obligation to finish the fire sprinklers in that building and under the wharf to allow that to happen, so we're gonna be coming in and talking to you about that here shortly, as soon as I get an idea what the cost of that is. We do have an advantage on that in that we brought a new waterline in off of the street in order to provide fire line to the Phase One docks down there. So that expense is already out there, and we're just looking at having to do sprinklers. We've also leased the wharf right here, and that's been leased to Central California Seafood Marketing Association, and they're involved with, I don't really understand it, but it's a quota system. I believe the Nature Conservancy has reserved some of that, the city manages it, and these folks are operating under that sort of an hospice. And you can correct me if I'm wrong, because like I said, I don't really understand it. We've also got Morro Bay Landing in here now. I opened that about two years ago, and I've since sold the business to Wade Gavin, who's out here in his pink shirt. And he's, he's brought a lot of, a lot of activity down into this area. We have two new sport fishing boats that are operating out of there. They've been very busy this season and doing very well. We have the kayak business in there. Wade has taken that over. He sells fishing kayaks, does rentals and paddleboard rentals as well. So that kind of brings you up to speed with what's going on in terms of the businesses out there. Where we're at right at the moment is we've processed our plans for the Phase Two set of dock, or Phase 1B set of docks over here. I just signed the contract for the eelgrass survey yesterday. We're putting our order in for lumber right now. Hopefully, in your next city council meeting, we'll be bringing forward a, on consent agenda, I assume, a license agreement to be able to use the, one of the city's yards to actually build those docks in like we did with the first phase. So we hope to actually be drilling and pounding nails and screwing bolts and so forth by the middle of next month. That means that we should have, have construction going on that and those docks going in the water sometime after October. I wrote you a letter that's in your package, and I was advised that it seemed, seemed to be a little bit strident. If it was, I apologize, it wasn't intended to be. We, as Cindy mentioned to you, we have, already have a concept plan here that's been approved and conditioned. My objection to the conditions that had been added by staff and that Planning Commission was simply that the, those conditions are embodied in my master lease with the city, and that it seemed to me that it was inappropriate, that since the Coastal Commission was requiring us to change the architecture, that's what, that's what I think the city council ought to be looking at, at this point, and that they ought, and that the council should honor the business deal that we had before. All three of these conditions do have an economic impact, and I think I'll leave, I think I'll leave it at that at the moment. The changes that we made to the building, could we show the mall, or the first pictures? This is a floor plan that was approved in the concept plan. It's Mall's design. It's actually two buildings. There's the main building here, and then there's a smaller building here that's sandwiched right up against the, against Harbor Hut. We looked at that, and we thought we could do better in getting a more efficient building. And so that's what I asked Gene to do for us. Next one. These elevations, I think you saw them before, they're basically kind of a modern architecture. Those were based off of a plan that was done for the entire north area of the waterfront at one point, that was looking at everything from the Coast Guard Building on up as a redevelopment. I think when, when Mr. Mall put these together, he was simply using that as guidance in terms of what the architecture should look like. Next one, please. So this is a floor plan that we have now. What we've done is we've reduced, we've gone from having two buildings to where we have a single building now. I think that's much more efficient. That other small building over there was going to be something that was going to be difficult to actually utilize, especially under the, under the constraints of Measure D. The lateral access, you know, I thank staff for looking at that and making a different recommendation. We're in agreement with, with the elimination of condition six and seven at this point. I won't go into all of the physical constraints and so forth, and skip onto the next one. We reduced the, we reduced the overall size of the building by 1,278 square feet. We increased the public deck, shown up here, by 119 square feet, and we reduced the profile of the building such that the, the open view area has been increased by about 8.6%. So the changes that we made to the buildings have lessened all of the impacts. And because of that, again, it seems inappropriate to, to put new conditions on the property.
Bob, I know we were talking about some additional time to get through some of this, and I think we set it for 15, so...
Okay.
And maybe you can reserve some time following this. There could be more questions and stuff like, I think we could be pretty... There could be more questions and stuff like, I think we could be pretty free-form in this and getting more information from you, but I was just politely urging, I suppose.
Okay. Well, let me get done then. The one other condition that staff has recommended was to change Condition Number 8, which was to change the, or to reserve eight feet on the public deck for public viewing there. Since then, I spoke to you earlier, Noah, and you suggested perhaps using benches there. I've gone back and looked at the Coastal Commission conditions, and we have a condition there that requires us to put three benches in along there. It also allows tables and so forth. So I'd like, if you would, to consider just mirroring the Coastal Commission's condition. Allow us to put benches there. They're supposed to be oriented so that the, oriented toward the rock and toward the bay. And then lastly, I'd ask you to honor the business deal that we had with regard to the non-conforming side, and to allow that to remain.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
With that, we'll go back to, come back to council for questions, and we'll focus on questions, and then open it up for a public comment, and then follow in public comment. It's always going to engage in a little bit more questions, but some discussion deliberation. But I'll start off with a couple of questions of mine, and I just wrote down some notes. Cindy, on 2010 approval of the docks, you had the slide. First of all, I just want to make some clarification on this. So there's some complexities to what we're reviewing tonight, and with that is, we have a conditional use permit, UPO 058. Mr. Fowler is here tonight with a precise plan for a specific phase, just land improvements. UPO 058 is part of a, as you were explaining, an overall project that combined multiple lease sites, different timelines, all kinds of moving parts. It might have been hopeful at the time, but it's, we've got what we've got now. And so in reviewing this, and from, as being a former Planning Commissioner, I think one of the things that was somewhat difficult is focusing on what we're dealing with. And that, it's the landside improvement. Having said that, we're opening up the whole, what's complex about this is when you look at UPO 058, the original conditional use permit, you have three applicants on there. So I guess my first question on that is, we're opening up the conditional use permit, UPO 058, that is entitled to three different applicants, yet we're only talking to one applicant today, Mr. Fowler. So how do you get, how do you get the other applicant's approval on modifying the existing conditional use permit? I just want to start with that.
I think as was stated by Cindy earlier, this project moved forward with overall approval and then was broken into phases. And so those phases were processed by the individual leaseholders as we moved forward, and they were treated...it's interesting, you know, you had these three brought together, but then every single approval and every single action we've taken since then really sort of disregarded that original approval and kind of just looked at individual pieces each time, probably because it had to, because you had individual leaseholders that were involved with those. And so that's how it's moved forward, you know, to this point. I don't know, I mean, that's about the best answer I have for you, is that's how those things have come to, you know, come forward for revisions and changes. It's been by the individual leaseholder through the phasing process.
Okay.
I would like to bring one other thing up before we continue to move forward. When we had Mr. Fowler up here speaking, we had opened the public comment period, and then there may be others that want to speak, so I didn't know how that was working.
Okay. Thanks for that. I just wanted to bring the, thank you, I wanted to bring the applicant up to speak and then get into the question period. Seems a little backwards to some degree, but thought we'd get into questions first and then open up for public comment instead of the applicant presentation.
Just making sure we didn't lose track.
Yeah, thanks. So the other, so in opening up the whole question of this conditional use permit, I have some questions in regard to the overall conditional use permit that I'm going to discuss and ask questions about, because I think it's pertinent to the land use improvements. Specifically, Cindy, when you were talking about the 2010 approval of the dock improvements, can you explain that? I've got my notes from the 2010 approval, and what was approved in 2010 by Planning Commission is different than what is approved than what's up there. And, you know, I had some comments to that today when we were talking through that, and I just want to talk about the history of the 2010 approval that were, that you discussed earlier.
Sure. The 2010 precise plan approval approved all of the waterside improvements. So that's the docks that we call Phase 1A, Phase 1B. At some point, there'll be a Phase 1C, but that has not been applied for yet. And then it also included, the scope of work included the GAFCO remodel, and I believe a small fish market area. There was some differences, because when you, if you were to pull up the 2010 Planning Commission packet, you would see that the docks are not the way that they are proposed today. And I think I had a slide where I showed the original docks and then revised. It wasn't until 2013, when I think some more evolution of the three business owners' responsibilities was evolving, and they could probably speak to this more, because this is a little bit predated me, but in 2013, that's when they applied to Coastal Commission and the Army Corps and said, "We'd like to modify our dock configuration. There'll be less environmental impacts. It's, you know, better boat maneuverability," so on and so forth. They came to the city with the revised dock configuration after Coastal had approved it and applied for a minor modification that was approved at the staff level. So that's why Planning Commission didn't see, after 2010, they never saw a revised dock configuration. In 2015, when they looked at the precise plan that you're looking at today, that's just landside improvements, so the scope of work doesn't include any water.
I'll probably get to some of my discussion points on that. Does this, I understand we're talking about the landside improvements. Looking at the existing dockside improvements that are on the plans, does that, do those plans approve the entire, we're looking at phase, it might be easier for a slide, if you can go to the slide with the docks. Might be the overhead?
Yeah. Or perhaps AGP can switch back to my PowerPoint presentation? Okay, what slide do you think would be best? The dock plan?
I think you've got it on the projector, actually.
Okay, I know where that one is. I can go there.
Yeah, I like the screen.
Okay, there you go. So this, so...
So Phase 1A is to the left, Phase 1B is to the right, and then there's the gap in the middle with Harbor, the connector?
Yeah, they get this gap in the middle, so where the red dot is right now, it's like the crossbar connecting Phase 1A and Phase 1B. That will be part of a future Phase 1C building permit to complicate matters more. That will be, that is the responsibility of the Harbor Hut business owner applicant. So Phase 1B, that's hopefully going to start construction in October. That's this area. And then, you know, this head float, I guess that's a head float too, and then these finger slips. But yeah, this is Phase 1C. And if I kind of, if I recall that, what I heard as I started working in planning back in 2012 and 13, when they were talking about this, was that it was, and maybe our Harbor Director has recollection of these conversations, but that there was going to be some better boat maneuverability with this design versus, oopsie, darn it, okay, with this design. And you see how this, you know, originally, there was this big open hole there because of eelgrass, and then they kind of, they changed it to that.
Okay. And, pardon me, thanks. So right now, we have Phase 1A, 1B, that will be complete with the docks. So there's a gap in the middle, which you're saying is Phase 1C, that is the responsibility of Harbor Hut.
Right. And Phase 1A was built and finalized. It's just Phase 1B that doesn't exist yet, but it will very soon.
So I know I asked a question prior to the meeting with Eric, and looking at the lease site, so Phase 1B, there's on the, on the map that I have, you probably can't see it on the screen, has to do with Lease Site 113W. And I don't see that as part of, it's not identified in the original use permit. So I'm looking for some conversation on constructing that, or getting, how that's, if it's not part of our conditional use permit, that particular lease site, how is that working? And I ask this because this has been, there's been a lot of moving parts to this, and so I want to get some, I want to dive into some of the details as we're concluding. And I'll tie it into how I feel it affects the landside portion of this, if you'll bear with me, but I just want to get through some of the questions. Pardon me? Yeah, sure. Yeah.
Eric, I was, can you tell us what is the lease site that you refer to?
Lease Site 113 is the lease site between GAFCO and Harbor Hut, and it's the Dynegy property, which is referred to as, there's the gap in between. And, you know, I'm just doing my due diligence through, you know, this, you know, very large report, and Lease Site 113 didn't jump out to me throughout all this. So, you know, I just want to ensure that as we're doing this, is that being constructed on Dynegy's portion of it? Is it City's portion of it? Is it tied to Fowler's lease agreement?
It's part of Fowler's lease.
Okay.
Yeah. And Dynegy is the, Dynegy's lot is the area that's...
That angle? Okay. So with that, if there's any questions on that, it'll all be worked out in this paperwork here, as far as resolution or lease agreement, that you're, you've got that, Eric?
Yeah, so 113, good evening. 113 used to be under Verge's previous ownership, under the earlier lease. 113 was a totally separate lease. In the new lease that was penciled before I started into this job, they were combined together into 124, 128, and 113W. So they're all one, considered under the lease site. Many of the lease sites, as you know, they're multiple numbered individual sites that are combined into one master lease agreement. 113W is combined into this one master lease agreement.
I'll leave that for my questions for now, and leave counsel for their questions, and then we'll open up for public comment. John or Noah, do you want to start off with any questions?
Sure. I'd like to just talk, pick up on a question, and I think you've started to address it with your presentation, actually both presentations, but as regard to the Planning Commission concerns about connections falling apart, and specific to public access on the water side. And just want to make sure we connect the dots one more time on how both Coastal and now our staff and the applicants are assuring that we are connecting, making those connections, and they're not lost. As you mentioned, the Planning Commission didn't get the opportunity to look at this in entire, the context of the entire area, and we're really focused just on the exact lease site. So I think the slide that you have here does that, and it's important, because there was some very strong public comments and generally sentiment about protecting that, making sure the access is there. So I think you did a good job of covering it, but my thought was, let's make sure that we give everyone a chance to really pause and see just how strong the public access is there. And it's on the docks, which is new, as you mentioned, so I guess that's not really as much a question as I was hoping, but... No, I'm not going to keep talking. No. The other question, though, that has come up as well, and it was part of the original approval in 2008, but it has to do with the restaurant size. And the square footage, as I understand it, is basically moving from the existing restaurant as a separate building to the second floor of the proposed building.
Yes, that's correct. It's the exact same square footage.
Okay, great. And that square footage, as laid out in the plan, does not include the public view deck. So the public view deck is separate from the restaurant.
Right. Right, that's correct. So it's 952 just for the restaurant, and then I think the view deck is, I want to say, like 1,290 or, yeah, it's not counted part of the restaurant.
So that would be how we, you can justify the idea that the restaurants, square footage is still allowed, and yet that there is a benefit to the public there, and there's some debates about whether we should have picnic tables or so forth up there, and to make sure that those are public access tables.
Right. So the public view deck is not part of the restaurant at all. It's completely public, so whether we do tables, benches, a combination, it's all public, and it's not part of the restaurant. So that is a public benefit amenity.
Great. And in regards to what the Coastal Commission is recommending, what we have on our plans in relation to having the bench versus just complete open space, what from the staff's side are you suggesting, if you could clarify that for the presentation and tonight's discussion?
Sure. So staff is recommending, of course, consistent with the coastal approval, so there is a coastal condition that requires a minimum of three benches on that view deck. The applicant had proposed tables there, so Planning Commission wanted to make sure that those tables over time didn't lend themselves to have the appearance that they were for the restaurant only. So they wanted, so that if people came up to the second floor to look at the view deck, that there wasn't tables crowded around, and they could stand there and look out at the view. Of course, considering that there may be people who want to sit down and enjoy the view, you know, the nice compromises for those who are just up for a second with their ice cream cone, and they want to just take a quick look, they don't have to, you know, navigate through tables, or if they do want to sit down, then they have that option. So the 50/50 was the compromise that kind of meets people of all ability levels.
So just to confirm then, 50% would be available for table-type seating that is publicly accessible with some small signage, like Coastal Commission recommended. The other 50% would be some open space and benches, as recommended by Coastal. Is that the way staff's recommending that?
Effectively, yes. The idea was, was to have that combination, because we felt that it would, you know, it was beneficial to the public as a whole to have tables that were adjacent to the railing, because you might want to sit there and look out into the water. And then, you know, so we reemphasized the component about the signage that would go onto the individual table, so you would never confuse it with something that was not public. So, you know, we've had situations in the past where people complained about setups being on tables, and so then not appearing as public, but so we sort of reemphasized the signage component that would be for each table.
Okay. And with the benches there, I guess I'm hearing, this is my question, I'm hearing agreement then on something that may have been somewhat contested coming into tonight, but it sounds like staff and the applicant are comfortable with the Coastal Commission's recommended condition there. I just want to confirm that.
We, so, no, we have something a little bit different than what was originally approved. So the Planning Commission said, "Hey, you have an eight-foot setback from the railing periods, so people can walk along and stand there." We felt that there was a way probably to have a compromise there, where you could have tables... to have a compromise there, where you could have tables there, because I think people do like to sit there. And so that was, that was coming up with the signage that was discussed previously, but it was going to be specific, and they're going to have it on each table. So it was clear. I think it was a little less clear in the Coastal Commission conditioning. And there was not a 50/50 limitation for the Coastal Commission's conditioning, that just allowed tables wherever.
Okay.
Trying to keep the, you know, the intent of the Planning Commission's condition while also thinking that people might like to sit along the railing, public, I mean, and so-
And a bench-type seat or so forth.
Or even on a table. I mean, you might want to take, go to lunch up there, Council Members Smutler, and sit there.
I don't eat. You can ask my wife. No, just kidding. Okay. It's the opposite of that, actually. I think those are my questions for now. Looking forward to the discussion.
John?
Thank you both for, well, all of you for the presentation, more than one. If I understand it correctly, being a non-architect type, the surgical appearing initial building versus the current building that we have now appear to be significantly different in terms of, I mean, my view of what I saw and what I currently see now as the architectural design and the very educated description and wonderful description that we had from the architect. There was some mention made of tying it to the rock. Did I understand it correctly, that the exterior will have rock that will be similar to the appearance of the rock? Was that, if I may ask, a question of the architect?
Yeah. Basically, just around the elevator and the public stairway, I would put rock facing there that would be similar to the rock on Morro Bay. You have to kind of tie things together whenever you can.
Yeah, absolutely. And the aesthetics, in terms of aesthetics, the wood again, the type of wood and the appearance of the wood, I mean, I get a sense of it with the pictures that I've looked at, but, and the drawings, but could you describe that for me?
Yeah.
And tie it into the appearance of the wood on the harbor, and some of the adjoining areas that we have there?
What I'm trying to do is continue the horizontal line. If you use board and bed, that'd be vertical lines, and that would be opposed to the horizontal line of the horizon on the outside there. So we use horizontal lap siding. It would be hardy plank. And the wood that we were looking at, the hardy plank, we specked out on the color board, would be a heavy texture. So you'll start seeing some texture there. Maybe a lap siding horizontally. So. And how that ties in with the rest of the building on the Embarcadero, there is quite a bit of hardy plank siding, horizontal siding, further down on the newer constructions.
Great. Okay. The public open space, again, I think I have a pretty good picture of, of that with Mr. Smutler's questions. Am I understanding correctly that there will be a second-story observation deck as well, or observation area, that, and the access to that would be through the elevator, up and out, or is it a walkway up only?
There are two accesses to the second floor public viewing deck. One would be through the elevator, and then the other one on the slide is on the left, excuse me, on the right-hand side of the building. That's the elevator and the public stairway. And then on the right-hand side, there's a public stairway that goes up there.
Okay, great. An economic question, possibly, since, you know, we're obviously, as a city council, concerned about the types of projects that are built, not only from an architectural aesthetics standpoint, but also from an improved economic benefit, not only to those that lease the properties from us, but also from us as landlords. Economically, obviously, I'm not going to get in the middle of asking you direct questions with regard to what the potential economic benefit may well be for the city. But would you say there would be an improvement that might anure to the city in terms of economic benefit overall that would include the retail component, lease component, et cetera, that would be greater than 50% of what the current economic benefit is? And I'm trying to ask that as generic as I possibly can.
Sure, I understand.
Got it.
Yeah, we're going to have more, more retail space to lease out there. Obviously, from my standpoint, it has to have enough of an economic benefit to justify the construction costs out there. We're obliged under our lease to spend at least a million dollars to demonstrate that we spent at least a million dollars on this improvement in order to get the next extension to our lease. Where, where the economic benefit will come to the city is if we can generate enough business out there to get us into percentage rents. I think we're going to be, be doing that probably next year. We didn't achieve it yet this year, at the end of fiscal year was the, the end of June. But I'm confident with the businesses going on out there right now, the increases and so forth, that we will get there. But that, that's where the city will see the economic benefit will be, when we achieve that percentage rent.
Great.
Mark? That's all for now. Thank you. Thanks, John. Christine?
Yes, thanks. So sticking to questions, this is a really obvious question, but I'll ask it. We are going to be asked to give feedback on the design, right? I mean, that's essentially what brought us back here. The new redesign, do you want the council to give feedback on the architecture? Is that part of it, or is it just sort of a-
Well, that is the reason they're back here. They were given direction by the Coastal Commission to come back, and so here they are.
Right.
And it's part and parcel to all the pieces. This is discretionary approval process, and includes the design and the conditions of approval and things like that, so.
Okay, great. We've been talking about a lot of other things. We haven't actually talked about the design, so I wanted to make sure I wasn't missing something.
It's a big part of it.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I'll discuss that at discussion time. Okay, thanks. So, you know, I'm going to ask you, when do I do ex parte, Mr. Panone, now or during discussion? Ex parte with folks?
Either way.
Okay, I'll do it now. So I did go down and meet with Mr. Fowler, spoke to him. I'm just letting people know, these are the folks I have spoken to before I discuss things tonight. And we walked on the property and looked at some things, and I appreciate his time. And then I also spoke by phone today to Mr. Tognizini, who sent us all a letter about some concerns he had for the project as well. So I just wanted to sort of get that out, because some of my questions may come from some of those conversations. Okay. There, there are a lot of rumors, too, that are flying around sometimes about projects. I don't know if anybody's heard any of these, but could we later ask, the Quonset Hut, is it permitted? By that, I mean the building where South Bay Wild is in right now.
Yes, it is. And, yes.
And that structure is intended to stay? Okay. And the other question, was many things that you've brought out that the Planning Commission didn't know in advance of their May meeting, did they know about the new business, the Measure D compliant business of South Bay Wild? Did they know that in, in May?
No, they didn't.
Okay.
I would add something to that. They especially didn't know the magnitude of the business that was going on there. And then it, and I don't think they ever really, you know, looked at what impacts, you know, that business being there and having activities going on outside would have on pushing through the access that they requested. I don't think, there was not really any discussion on the part of the Planning Commission about that type of thing, because it wasn't brought forward.
Okay, so the staff didn't bring it forward. We didn't know about it on the city's side, and it didn't come forward from the applicant's presentation either. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then, was this current sign that's in existence now, was that erected by Mr. Fowler, or was that there from the previous owner?
That was there from the previous owner. It's been there for many years.
Okay. And could the docks that we saw in their current configuration, could they be approved like that today?
No, they couldn't. There's much tighter regulations regarding avoiding impacts to eelgrass.
Okay. But the one, but what we do see did get full approval in, in 2013 by the Coastal Commission, as well as the letter we all received, too, from Army Corps, correct?
That is correct. It's only since last, I think, October or November that they've increased their regulations regarding eelgrass.
But those are already done, so we won't see that impacted. But perhaps the phases that are coming in this project may be impacted by that?
I can't speak to Phase 1C, but Phase 1B, no. I mean, they are required to do a pre-construction eelgrass survey, and the applicant indicated, just signed a contract.
Right.
But they're not subject to these increased buffer requirements that we may, the city may find other applicants up and down the Embarcadero coming in the future will be subject to.
Okay. Would you mind, since we're on the docks, could we go back again to that current dock configuration slide? And could you tell us, just so we're straight, on the three lease site holders, could you tell us whose docks are, or the responsibility to whom, in other words, Mr. Fowler has some, when you did the one, if you could just tell us whose or whose, it would help clarify?
Sure.
Thanks.
Okay. Okay. Great American Fish Company, they just put in this gangway right here that connects to the tee pier. It's still, I believe, in building permit. And then, so this is their docks. This is the area where Phase 1B is, and then it will come out like that. That's part of Morro Bay Landing. This is Harbor Hut, and so just west of Harbor Hut. They are responsible for bringing forward a new dock design. And then, Morro Bay Landing. Now, this is a Google Earth image that I got, I think, yesterday, but unfortunately, it's from 2013. They haven't updated their images. So it doesn't show, because the, this is before the docks were built. And is this the right slide? I'm wondering if there's maybe a better slide.
Perhaps the one that's on it for them?
Oh.
That, that might work?
Okay, sorry about that.
Or, or, yeah.
Okay. So here we go.
And if you could do it like 1A, 1B, and 1C?
Let's go from left to right. Okay, so here, this is Phase 1A, that's-
Completed.
Completed, Morro Bay Landing.
Okay.
Or MBMS, the applicant. Okay. Here, Phase 1C, and these three lines here, these slips, that's Harbor Hut. And then here, on the other side of this float, these slips here, and this is Morro Bay Landing. And then this area here behind GAFCO is GAFCO's. That, that is a dock that was put in, and then the, and then the gangway was put in. And I, the applicant's agent probably knows the info on this. I think this was put in a year or two ago.
Okay. And then, when Mr. Fowler was talking about beginning construction again, he was talking about his portion of 1B.
Yeah. So the, the stuff that's going to start construction in October is this section of yellow line, this, so this head float, and then I guess this could be a head float too, coming down there. But he's only going to do, this direction is south, so he's only going to do the south side of that head float, that's Phase 1B.
And that's his responsibility for that?
And that's his responsibility. This, this left side here, and this head float, and that little gangway, that's part of Harbor Hut. They have been precise planned, to coin a term, for that, but the Harbor Hut has not submitted a building permit application yet.
Okay, great. And then, just where, do we know where the nearest bicycle parking is? Now that we put in the bridge, I'm wondering, in general, and maybe Mr. Enderstie knows, because I think we're going to have a lot, I know we're showing increased use of the connecting bridge of Morro Creek.
The new pocket park may be a logical place there. I know on the north tee pier, there's a bike rack. The south tee pier, I believe, has one next to that Coke machine on the south side of the pier, on the base leg.
Okay. Okay, thanks. Have we received, let's see, I have a few questions. These, these are mostly staff questions, and then I have a few questions for applicant and folks he's with. So to clarify again, going back to the view deck and the restaurant, so the restaurant will operate within, within the building, inside. And then who will maintain the tables and chairs outside, on the deck? If we put chairs and tables there, and we say this is public access, who's responsible for cleaning, cleaning them and rearranging them?
It's going to be the applicant's responsibility.
Okay.
You know, in short. How he works that out on his end, whether he has the restaurant, person that leases the restaurant take care of them, or he has some other entity, that's up to him.
Okay, so the restaurant, if I choose to eat restaurant food and take it to the dock, I, or excuse me, take it to the view deck, I'm more than able to do that. But I won't be receiving table service there, it sounds like.
That could be the case. I'm aware of other restaurants on the Embarcadero where they do provide table service out on public access tables. And whether or not those conditions allow that on other projects, I don't, I don't know.
But that, as a visitor, I, you know, I'm not going to know the nuance of this. So if I am enjoying the view, and I sit down at the table, based on this condition, based on this project, I'm going to have to go inside and do a takeout situation? That's, was that what we're creating right now?
Correct.
Okay. And then what about having a beer there? Can you have open container alcohol purchased inside the restaurant out there? I'm just trying to figure out how it's going to be used, right?
I think that would probably be subject to their ABC license, and they'll condition it if, whether or not alcohol can be consumed outside of the physical premises, because the restaurant itself is contained to that 952 square feet. That's, that's their legal, you know, approval.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just, these are sort of interesting things for me, when I think about how we're going to use that public space, and how others who are visiting to enjoy it. Okay. And then there would be no condition that the restaurant wouldn't be able to open windows to also have an outdoor feel. There's no condition like this at that point, and at this point, right, that the actual restaurant there couldn't have roll-up windows or open windows, and they could, people could sit inside, be inside, but feel like they're outside. Does that make sense?
I think so. I haven't seen anything about, I haven't seen any conditions that say
the windows have to be closed. I would, I think they could be open.
Okay. So that's, so it's available. So people can use it, how, so there's a variety of uses for that space. A public use, and then a use that's tied to the business functioning, like many people expect a business to function. But it, but we're not establishing specific outdoor dining that is supported by the restaurant?
That's correct.
Are we outlawing it?
Are we outlawing, say that again?
Are we outlawing the ability for the restaurant to have table service, a waiter to come out to the table?
There is no condition that states that.
Okay, so-
So there's no prohibition.
There's no prohibition?
Currently, yes.
Okay, okay. So if we manage the percentage of available tables versus open space or benches, that would basically then leave how those tables are to be utilized with the discretion of the leaseholder and his leasing at the restaurant. I guess what I'm saying is, I've been places where I've seen roped-off tables and chairs, and people say, oh, you know, you need, if you're going to eat, and especially it's, you know, if you want to have a drink or something, they'll say, oh, you have to stay inside this roped-in area, even though it would be an external area. And then there are other places where the public, so there's the rope, there are the tables, but I can sit here and have my peanut butter and jelly sandwich on the bench. I've seen those spaces. Is that the kind of mixed space we're hoping to accommodate here?
The entire deck is for public use.
The entire deck? Okay, okay. So there wouldn't be any roping possible?
No.
Okay. But there could be table service, potentially?
There, there is no prohibition against that. They could have that. The tables will also have signage on it, so they're for public use.
Sure, great. Okay. All right. Thanks, thanks. I'm just trying to think about how people actually use public spaces. And then the retail space, that, in response to Mr. Hedy's question, that Mr. Fowler said he would be having retail space, and that would generate some more revenue. The retail space, are there prohibitions on what can be sold in there, per Measure D?
The permit talks about that it has to be Measure D compliant businesses, so.
Okay, so it would be things that you would use for fishing, commercial fishing, and, I mean, excuse me, I mean, sport fishing?
Correct.
Okay. Thanks. Can you buy a fishing license there?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And bird stripe deterrent, could you describe what bird stripe deterrent looks like, or if we have it somewhere right now on the Embarcadero?
There are several different types to use for deer, bird stripe deterrent. You can put a decal on the window that will reflect, you know, the birds see it, and they shy away from it, or a mirrored finish, something like that. There are several commercial deterrents that you can, you can use. GAFCO's just puts them on, Great American, excuse me, Giovanni's just puts them on. There are commercially available products we can use.
Okay, great. And my last question, and thanks for your patience, everyone, is the pocket park. Being that the pocket park would be with the, the configuration of the way things are, you're really not going to have too much to see if you're at the park. But I'm wondering, has there been any discussion, well, we've talked in the past here at council meetings about the- meetings about the Coast Guard project, and how we're sort of looking perhaps to reconfigure some space? Have we talked about an alternative use for the pocket park, maybe on the staff side or with the applicant? This came up in my conversation earlier this week, of moving, relocating the restroom and the shower there, instead of having an open park, is where, I know we talked about options for public restroom and public shower to be relocated due to construction that may be happening at the Coast Guard site. Thanks.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I mean, I can jump in on that. As, as you know, we did another amendment to Mr. Fowler's lease four, six months or so ago, that changed some of the deadlines and whatnot, and one of the options we put on there was if the city, per the whole Coast Guard project, if deemed necessary to move that restroom and shower use, if we could fit. The pocket park's pretty small to begin with, and it includes its trash enclosure, so it's going to be a tough fit. But if he's got public restrooms in his building, you know, maybe the showers can squeeze over there. We did write an option into his lease that, at the city's option, you know, given certain parameters, the city can move in there and take that over and build some restroom and/or shower facilities in there. So we do have that option in his lease right now.
Okay, great. Thanks very much. That's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Christine. And that'll conclude the questions at this point, so we'll open up for a public comment at this point. For anybody who'd like to speak to this item, public comment's open, please come forward.
Shirley Fraser, 20-year resident of Morro Bay and a representative of neighboring residents and visitors here to our area. This proposed commercial building will wipe out the entire bayview in front of Morro Rock from my home, which it has had for the past 65 years. This will also affect my neighbors and other residents up Surf Street and up behind us on Scott Street also. The loss of this view corridor could be mitigated and much of the water view maintained by reducing the height of the single-story portion down from 17 to 14 feet, as referenced by the waterfront master plan. Reduction's impact on the leaseholders would only be 3 feet, but will go a long way to preserving much of the bayview while still providing a space for the typical tall ceiling used in commercial applications. This proposed project's view corridors are not adequate to meet the requirements for new construction. Additionally, the proposed building's roofline slants and increases in height as it moves toward the water, reaching maximum limits. 14 feet for a single story is in keeping with the characteristics and scale of the existing single-story buildings at the north end of the Embarcadero, and would increase the view corridor in excess of the mere 2.8% increase which is noted in the plans. By setting this precedent of not accepting the maximum height limits, it would ensure the beautiful spacious views afforded to everyone now, and would preserve them for future generations. Additionally, these businesses are already waterfront, and limiting their height will not eliminate their view. Excuse me. This view is enjoyed by many people, numerous visitors here to the Veterans Hall, and the people who come down the end of the street, locals and tourists alike. If all of these 22 leaseholders were to build up to the maximum height limit of 25 feet, the view of the entire bay out here at our north end of the Embarcadero would be completely eliminated, and that would be a great loss for visitors and residents alike. Just because the south end of the Embarcadero with its dense business concentration contains many two-story buildings, doesn't mean that it's a good fit for the more open north end with its view of the rock and waterway. We wouldn't need the public observation decks if large buildings weren't blocking the view. Numerous people come down here, as I've already mentioned, to see our spectacular waterfront, the bay, the sand spit, and the iconic Morro Rock. It's essential to preserve our natural beauty and not allow the hardscape to impede it. Trees can be trimmed, but buildings are permanent structures, not likely to be reduced. If you decide to reject my request, I would ask that you at least vote to authorize long overdue tree trimming to city trees that would open up and restore bayviews to the southeast and northeast sides of these buildings that many of us had enjoyed. In lieu, fees for the loss of the view corridor could be imposed for this project. I hope that you will look at this from more than just an economic standpoint of view, and I respectfully ask that you give consideration to this, along with the Planning Commission's concerns about this project, and keep in mind the interest of all the public. I ask that you mitigate this by exercising your right to modify this plan and requiring the applicant to lower the overall height of the single-story portion of the proposed building, thus increasing the view corridors a condition for approval of this plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Shirley. Anybody else for a public comment?
George Lee, owner of GAFCO, and resident of Morro Bay. Sure was pretty, huh? Kind of the design of this building looks like the tie boat's coming back. Anyway, I heard a lot of talk about retail space, new restaurant, nothing, nothing about commercial fishing at all. Did you notice that? And the design of this, configuration of these docks, looks like, to me, a navigational nightmare. I've been around boats all my life, and I can't even, I can't believe this is ever approved. I'm looking at this thing also, let's think, let's talk about the restaurant part of it. 900 square feet in a restaurant, that's a joke. So you know, naturally, they're going to have to use the outside. Now, we all seen that the access along the waterfront have been abused by most of the restaurants. And now, you think that this isn't going to be abused up here because there's no room for them? They have to use that deck. So that's, that's just a, and if you, like I said, you just check up and down on the waterfront, and you see that, I think even the mayor brought this up one time, when he worried about how, well, the off-the-hook, he might go out, and he says, well, I wouldn't want the door out to be in front so they could use the walkway for seating. Anyway, we all know it's been abused. Nobody enforces this, and I don't see how they intend, will ever enforce this. I just, I just keep bringing it up, that it looks like the fishermen are just getting squeezed out more and more and more. The, the slips that are being used now by Morro Bay Marina, or what they call Morro Bay Marine? Anyway, if you go over there, there's yachts, there's even a sailing vessel from Russia. What has that got to do with fishing? Has nothing to do with sport fishing, has nothing to do with commercial fishing of any kind. Why is this allowed? How come the harbor people are not enforcing these things? I, I, I just can't imagine why the, the commercial fishermen are up here just screaming. The people of yesterday seen what was going to happen. That's why they put in Measure D. They seen what we're going to do now. And now, everybody just ignores it and just lets it go out the window. You know, I don't know what's going to happen on, on possibility of Fisherman Association or something, but I've, I see some lawsuits coming down the line on this. So I, I think you should be very careful what you're doing here. And the lady spoke about the two-story building. You know, every time we try to do...
George, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap it up. I've been pretty flexible on expanding the time.
Every time we try to do two-story building, it always got shot down. So, deal with it.
Thanks, George. Anybody else for a public comment? Seeing none, I'll close public comment, bring it back to council for discussion and deliberation. We have four conditional issues from the Planning Commission that Ms. Jason listed, and you recommended consideration for items 6 and 7, and a recommendation to modify condition number 8, and you recommended the sign pole condition to stay. Those are the staff recommendations. As per Ms. Johnson was discussing about, we're going to get into the land side part of this discussion, and I guess that would include the design of it. And I'll start out with some discussion points on this, and then turn, and then pass it on to my colleagues on council. I'll start with ex parte. Met with Mr. Fowler, I don't know when it was, but it was probably last week sometime. Thanks, thanks for making me down there. We talked about the dock specifically, we talked about the lateral access, and we talked about the electrical panel, hindering that type of work, and that about covered it for that part. Also spoke with Mr. Tognizini. He also submitted a letter, I think it's in this packet as well. He's offered his opposition to some, to some level to this project. That's, that concludes my ex parte to the project for, for this. And then, two, I'd like to acknowledge our public comment. Ms. Fraser, you sent in an email that we all received, I just wanted to thank you for that. We've had other comments from the public on how we're able to share more information, and you sent this in to us ahead of time, and it's not always easy for three minutes to be able to speak through things, so I just want to thank you for sending that and being so thorough. And now, I'll just get into some of my discussion points. First of all, Jean, you're pretty excited about this, I could tell, you know, you were saying, hey, pretty cool. And there's, there's certainly some cool features and interesting presentation in how you brought in each step of how it's constructed, the horizontal lines, how you're putting it together, how it's supposed to fit and flow. So I appreciated that. Thanks for that. Some of the things that come to mind real quick through the discussion was the pocket park specifically. There's a couple of things on that. If, for one thing, the trash receptacles are located there, so if by chance the city wanted to exercise that opportunity to put a bathroom there and showers, would that take up the, the receptacles that are there now? And we're already dealing with some of that issue with trash receptacles across the street. So I'd look for some guidance and comments on whether or not trash receptacles need to be relocated within the building itself, in considering that. And I'll look for some, some comments on that in a second. And the other, the other part of that was the bike parking, I think that was a great comment on that. And I thought, you know, looking at the drawings, the, the pocket park, or at least at this point, would lend itself for a great part for a bike rack in there, and I think it could handle at least four. So I think that would be something that could be easily achieved. And going back to the trash receptacle, if it is to say, is to stay where it is, following some discussion and some advice from our staff, I would request, it's screened, but I would request a cover over that. I know there's, there's already covers on all the dumpsters, but it's pretty prevalent on everyone that's in the, every trash receptacle that's out there, whether it has a cover or that the dumpster itself has a cover, it still creates a bird trash environment. So I'd look for some comments to that when we get done with discussion, but I would think that'd be relatively simple to actually cover it, and then it would keep out any of the birds for that, and then the rest of the trash. So I just want to cover the simple part, the simple things first. The pole sign, I'd agree with staff recommendation on that. I'm going to discuss a little bit of my experience with this project from Planning Commission. When all this was presented, yes, the, the signs were approved at that time. Each one of those projects, as I recall, the discussion was, yes, it's a non-conforming sign, and every discussion on that was, there is historic value, GAFCO, Harbor Hut, and Verges. Verges is not, it doesn't exist there. I would agree with staff recommendation, and in fact, if you look at the, the architectural renderings, you know, the, I think the building itself stands by itself, and there's really not the necessity for the sign. Those are my comments on that. Condition number 8, I think I could be supportive for that, as far as the, and I'd probably ask for a little bit more clarification when we get into some more discussion, follow-up on some of my answers, as far as the 50% coverage, I'll ask for a little bit more clarification on that. Conditions 6 and 7, lateral access. The earlier conversation I had on the discussion for the docks, and that, in 2010, when that came to Planning Commission, as a planning commissioner, there was a lot of discussion put into that project, and it was a first proposal for having lateral access on floating docks, so, kind of progressive, and it required, you know, quite a bit of discussion on that. And part of the discussion, even at the early proposal, was having, even having ADA access. There was going to be a lift ramp in there, all that. When that's a precise plan, that was removed because it was actually proposed on the Dynegy lot, as I recall. And so there, there wasn't an agreement, and I just, I pulled out my packet today just to go through my notes on that, and there's a letter from Steve Goschke, who's the plant manager, on that. So, and the other part that was worked, that we worked through that, and the thing that kind of disappoints me is I see the, the proposed docks as it is, the lateral access from, from Harbor Hut in particular, and I know this doesn't necessarily get to this project, but it is all part of the same conditional use permit, and I just want to wrap this, this up. The, the way the, the drawings are now, and ask, you know, talking with Scott and Cindy today, thanks for taking the time with me on that. Evidently, these docks went to Coastal Commission, and the Harbor Hut section of that was done administratively. And the reason I point that out is because the amount of time that was put into how that lateral access, the, the gangway dock from Harbor Hut down, was, there was a lot of discussion on making sure that that, that lateral access off of Harbor Hut was not tucked inside. In other words, you look at it, and it looks more like a private dock, and it's concealed by the restaurant. And there's a lot of work by Planning Commission at the time to make sure it was pushed more towards the outside, it was more visible and more accessible. So that's the history part of, part of that, and as far as I can tell, Coastal Commission has approved that. I don't know where we can go with that. But as we wrap into the lateral access into your project, Mr. Fowler, and the one thing that isn't complete here is because this is a puzzle of many different lease sites, timelines, and requirements, there's going to be a gap between Harbor Hut and the other Phase 1A and Phase 1B. The whole thing behind that in promoting lateral access was having the lateral access there. Another conversation with Mr. Enderby about this, there's nothing tied to the lease that will require that, that dock section for Harbor Hut to be implemented as part of this conditional use permit, but it's not tied to the lease. So, Planning Commission may have pointed out that the lateral access should be required on your project, and, you know, there's, there's a consideration, but for me, the original project, the overall scope of the project was proposed as kind of a progressive floating dock lateral access. It's not going to be there because there's a gap between Harbor Hut. So, for me, that's, that's the pause on this whole project, and it's not necessarily tied to your lease by any means, but I'm going to suggest, and open for discussion, my recommendation on how we go about this. I would, I'm going to recommend that we continue this, and that you and the Harbor Hut have some conversations on how we're going to fill in that gap. Because we can go ahead and approve this today, and there's no telling when the timeline is to fill that gap is. We can condition it, but in my opinion, there's still no timeline into when it's going to be complete. This particular... This particular project has been, it's been lengthy. I know staff has worked on it for considerable amount of time. There's been, it's been a lot of moving parts and, you know, to your letter, I'll just make one brief comment on that. And thank you for submitting that. I know you're, you made some comments about, you know, what is the credibility of the city and the city council if we're changing a project that we once approved? This project has been changed significantly from its first inception. So I think it deserves the consideration right now in some of the discussions, specifically with lateral access. It doesn't mean for me that I couldn't be inclined to go along with staff recommendation on their condition six and seven. But I think it's time to pull this project together and ensure that that lateral access that was initially proposed is going to be achievable. And so those are my comments at this point. And I'll entertain, hopefully take on the conversations with my colleagues up here. You know, it doesn't mean that by continuing this project, it doesn't mean we come back and move forward with the staff recommendation. But I would like to entertain that continuance to take, have council an opportunity to review the lease site obligations and how that gap between Harbor Hut is going to be connected for this project because that's the way it was proposed. And the, the floating docks and lateral access has been changed significantly. So those are my, those are my comments and willing for more conversation.
Mayor Irons, could you, or actually Ms. Jentis, could you just show us exactly the portion that you're talking about on the slide? When you're talking about the gap, could you show it to us and maybe we can have some explanation of that?
Right. There's the gap right there. Yep. So that line, that horizontal line connecting the two Phase 1 and Phase 1A, 1B, both docks will be in there, but there's going to be a gap in between. And there's, I know it's not part of-
So you mean a pedestrian cannot walk. Okay, can you show me how the, I mean, I really want to understand it clearly, but I think it's a little, so what's there now is not there. The yellow is not there, that's proposed, correct? Or no, actually, left of it is there.
So the, the overhead, go to page, let's go to page here. I'll go to this page and I'll pull it out and that way I can, and I'll point, it's, Exhibit E, A3.
Does anybody know the page number for the digital? I know, but I, I know, but the digital number, does someone know on the, online? Okay.
We have the slide.
Okay, but it's, I understand, but if I could look at it on my little screen, it'd make it easier for me. So if somebody knows the number, the page number of the digital-
That's it?
Yeah, but does anybody know the page number?
It's A3.
Oh, okay.
It doesn't work, I know.
I'll just go paging through. I'm paging through. I just thought somebody might have said, oh, it's on page, you know, 79. And they all look a bit similar, you have to admit.
And part of my comments I failed to discuss for Mr. Fowler, you've, you've been performing on your, your, on your obligations. You're moving the project along, you're doing Phase 1, you're moving on Phase B, we're looking at your land site proposal. I commend you for that, I really do. And this may seem somewhat difficult, but I just want the opportunity to tie some things together. And we'll see what the rest of council has to say, but I, you know, I did want to comment as far as how, you know, you've been managing the lease site and I think that's, needs to be said. So thanks. And I'll turn it over. I know you're looking for that page.
So Exhibit E, we're looking at Exhibit E, yeah.
Yes.
Did you find it, Noah? It's page 144. 144, I think. So the gap is evident here, right? And then we can show for the public too. Cindy's showing, yeah, okay. Okay, so what you're, what, what Ms. Jentis is showing us on the screen right now, that doesn't, that does not exist in reality today, correct? However, on the same slide, to the left of that, that does exist in reality. So it's just a little bit hard for us to imagine that's real, but the other one is not real.
Right, so-
It's okay.
Once the building permit is issued on or around October sometime, this starts getting constructed, and I don't know how long that's going to take, but it might take a few months, then when this is done, this is all open water area.
Got it. Very clear.
Until we get a building permit application.
Okay.
We don't even have one.
Okay, I'm glad you pulled that out.
Just a minute.
Mayor Irons, thanks for the clarification.
I'll invite you up. Okay. So those are my, I'll turn it over. Who wants to go to that? And Noah?
Yeah, I'd like to follow up and actually ask staff to expand on what you were talking about, about ensuring that connection's made because it's a really important point. I'm just a little confused about the idea of continuing this and putting Mr. Fowler in-
I understand.
-in the responsibility role of trying to make this connection with the other party there. And I think that's probably more of our responsibility. So I'd like to see or hear from staff some ideas about how we could most effectively ensure that that connection does take place. Because I think my support of the lateral access is based on the assurance that that will eventually happen and be, be a part of the project at some point in the relatively near future.
And if, and if I can comment before he responds, is that, I don't want to jump back and forth, but is it, do you mind if I just comment real quickly? Yeah.
But maybe we all could, perhaps before we ask staff to respond, maybe all of us could comment on how we feel about this and then they'd have a broader sense.
Great. That's the way we normally do that. Go ahead. We'll, we'll get to the comments if Scott wants to respond on that.
I'm sorry, Mayor Irons, I just meant, excuse me, I'm sorry. I meant if we could all talk now and then ask staff to respond to maybe what we would all say collectively about this one issue.
Okay. Any more comments?
While they're talking, I'm just going to, I have other comments on other items, but I'd really like to focus on this one.
Yeah.
Just briefly, I'll just do my ex parte. I did talk with the applicant, Mr. Fowler, by phone today. And we talked about the history of the project and mostly focused on the different conditions that have been introduced recently from the planning commission. And I just did my due diligence in watching the planning commission meeting and reviewing all the different minutes and staff reports and the coastal commission actions as well.
Okay. Do you want me to reply, respond to your comment or do you want to just keep going with comments?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'll, I'll just make, I'll make a real brief comment while we're waiting for staff. And-
It may interest staff though to hear what, what you might say. I just might, I mean, three of them are, I might wait.
And while we're waiting, I just thought I'd interject my comment while we're waiting.
Okay, okay.
So your comment was, we wouldn't want to hold Mr. Fowler to this, is what you were saying and what the, and you're asking for staff direction on that.
Yeah, well, I, I may have misunderstood you, but it sounded like you wanted to continue this and ask Mr. Fowler to go back and then work with the other party. And to me, that, I think I may have misunderstood.
I think there's two things to that. One, continue that with that in mind, but for council and staff to understand the lease obligations for all of this. I understand what's complex about this is Mr. Fowler's asking for this approval tonight, but when you look at the, the whole conditional use permit, there are three parties to this. There's Mr. Fowler, there's Harbor Hut, and there's GAFCO. And we just heard from one of the applicants who's really not speaking too favorably of the project. And he's a signature to this conditional use permit. This is very odd. So I think those are some of the things that I think are confusing for everybody and staff and how we navigate through this. So I, I'm not trying, my, I don't have, I'm not taking any efforts to, we've already come a long way through this. Part of the pause was communicate with Harbor Hut on this. And the other is for staff and council to review the lease obligations on that before we proceed any further. And then once we get that information, we'd be able to come back and discuss the conditions as they are. So I'll pause here and turn it back over to Scott because I think he's ready to, for discussion.
Hopefully can have a little bit of a group effort here. So, so what we were just discussing was the language that's in the lease and what they're, what, if any triggers are in there to have these things move forward, specifically on the part of Harbor Hut, right? So they're all part and parcel to the same CUP. So that's Harbor Hut, GAFCO, and Fowler. And the city attorney makes a great point that you don't get to pick and choose which pieces of the CUP you move forward with. Once you start, which they've done and we've approved portions of it, they're required to continue forward with those unless they can get changes approved through the planning commissioner, city council. So moving back to the lease on Harbor Hut, there is a requirement, they moved forward and obtained approvals for improvements with that. And so the part that, but there is no, I guess, let me back up here a little bit, but there is no specific language as to when they're supposed to bring their part forward.
In the lease.
Correct. In the Harbor Hut lease, there was never an amendment to that lease because it was inaugurated in 1998. At the time, there was never an amendment to the lease to specifically require Harbor Hut to do these improvements. But as Scott's saying, and maybe Joel will weigh in as well, there's apparently some other potential legal obligations present.
When a land use entitlement is granted, it's granted in total. And the applicant or property owner can't take benefit from that land use entitlement on the items 3, 6, and 4 and not complete all of the land use entitlements that were granted. So the, I'm trying to address the comment that the mayor and Councilman Schmuckler made in that what's the path that the city has that the city doesn't have to use Mr. Fowler as leverage to get something done that someone else should be done, should be doing. And one approach could be that the council asks Mr. Fowler to do his best job at trying to convince his fellow lessee out there to do what he should be doing and have the city also be having a conversation with that lesseur, lessee in that, in the framework that I was just describing, that he has been taking benefit for years from a CUP, but hasn't done anything to complete what the CUP intended to have done. And so you can't take part benefit and not do everything. I'm going to be frank that if, if there was a refusal to do that, the city then would have to get really aggressive and even potentially try to do something to have that CUP invalidated because it's not being followed properly. That could be long and arduous and expensive to do that. So I don't want to make you think I have a silver bullet that's going to solve everything. But at least there's some, you were looking for some kind of discussion about paths, that's what I'm giving you. That's what we're giving you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gene.
I've made my comments, I'll follow up on those. I don't want to get ahead of things. So if you're done, we can pass them on.
I'll, I'll just finish up on this one item that I think it's, that's not a real reassuring track to achieve what I think everyone really recognizes is very important, particularly as this is proposed and as every party from the coastal commission to our planning commission and now here with our staff is recommending for lateral access is dependent on this one small connection. So there would still be public access, it just wouldn't flow nearly as well. And I'm not very optimistic that Mr. Fowler would have much success in working to encourage the other parties to complete that section. I think that's going to necessarily need to be more of the city function. I'd have to think about this a little more. And I'm also very cautious about postponing progress in one, one component, one phase that's here before us and ready to go. And I want to be sensitive to holding the one responsible party accountable for the actions of the other. And I think, you know, we've heard from the planning commission, let's avoid, and none of us were involved with this decision, but the way that this has been packaged together is something we should avoid at all costs in the future because of this very situation. So it's messy. But here we are dealing with it. So we're going to have to work through this a little more tonight to make sure that we have a good plan to achieve the-
Yeah.
-results we need.
Thanks, Noah. John?
My ex parte did not involve a discussion directly with the applicant nor any of the individuals involved. However, I did review in significant detail the history of the planning commission, their activities, and of course, the information that was provided to us. This is a extremely complex issue, obviously. I'm stating the obvious. On the one hand, I want to see the city move forward and economically benefit from modernization, yet maintain the integrity of what was meant and, and by design through Measure D. That's one issue for me. Two, to have three entities that disagree with regard to an ongoing project is what it is. I don't think the city can directly, with regard to what's before us tonight, impact that. However, I think it should be addressed directly through what I would consider to be significant inured benefit by Mr. Leig and over the years with regard to the lease that is held and what I heard tonight as improvements that were not made. And not knowing and not having read the lease or understanding the lease, I think that's something that the city should look at in whatever leverage possibly we have to make whatever needs to happen, happen with regard to this lateral issue. I, I appreciate the public input and the viewshed issue concerns me with regard to, you know, the, the three feet and the loss of a significant amount of view from a significant contingent of the community as well as the public. Yet on the one hand, the project itself satisfies the need somewhat to mitigate that by allowing for more open space, albeit very small, on a site that concerns me. And the concern with, with the building, besides the height issue, is to have a 700 square foot, if I'm correct, of restaurant, which in my mind is a very small building, pardon me?
950.
950, which is very small. My sense is there might be pushout, as I've seen in other areas of the city, onto that public space. And I would be very concerned about the loss of that and that becoming an extension of the restaurant itself. And so I, I'm concerned about that as an issue. All of that said, you know, this thing historically has been going on for, gosh, 100 years. Not quite, but many, many, many years. And I think it's time to move forward. And, and so I am- time to move forward. And, and so, I am supportive of not holding up the process any further, but working to mitigate the issues that I've outlined as much as we can with regard to the other parties, the lateral aspect of whatever we might be able to do with lease and the inermit that occurred with regard to benefit over many years, and holding that party responsible for helping to mitigate the issue. And so, personally, I don't want to, I don't feel that that should be the issue that would hold up moving forward tonight. I think the planning commission did a commendable job, as did staff in reviewing and mitigating the issues that were cited as much as possible. I believe the design addresses, as the Coastal Commission has approved, the issues that were raised with regard to what it looks like. And so, those are just some summary comments.
Thanks, John. Christine?
Okay, thanks, everyone. Thanks for all of your comments. And I wondered if just briefly we could address, I have a question for, based on Ms. Frazier's comment. So, the height, can we just talk just briefly about what we're allowing for height, that the height was approved by council, excuse me, by coastal of the current building, is that correct? The height of the building, that's, that's an approved height that has come back. So, when the Coastal Commission asked for reconsideration of the architecture, they weren't talking about height in particular?
Correct.
Okay. And then, I know I asked the question earlier, I think, when I met with staff, could you just remind us of what our waterfront master plan says about height in the, on the embankadaro zone there?
So, for single stories, it limits it to 14, excuse me, up to 17 feet with a four and 12 pitch. You can go up to 25 feet in the planned development overlay zone upon making findings of significant public benefit, to which the planning commission and city council did make those required findings. And--
And then Coastal also approved--
Yeah, and then Coastal approved it. And, and they do discuss it in their staff reports. So, I mean, it was, it was certainly something that was vetted thoroughly, you know, does the project, is it compliant, you know, views, height, all that.
And then, the view that is in question that Ms. Frazier's talking about is, I guess we would have to consider that a private view versus a public view. So, it's a view that, there would be, there's an impact from Surf Street, let's say, but then that, but the view from a neighbor's home or residential view is considered a private view and not a public view, is that right?
That is absolutely correct.
Okay. And, and the city, in terms of private views, at this point, we don't, our general plan, our LCP, doesn't say too much about private views.
Again, you are correct.
Okay, all right. But I certainly understand the concerns of the neighborhood, and certainly it makes sense to come forward and discuss, discuss it. So, many issues in this item that we've already talked about. There are conflicting, but I think there are conflicting uses in the area that we've been discussing tonight, and I think that's what we're all struggling with. Clearly, the planning commission also struggled with it. So, how are we, as a council, honoring Measure D? How are we protecting our eel grass environment? How are we preserving public access on public lands? How are we maintaining a good relationship with a leaseholder to enhance business development? So, those are all the issues that are involved in this one lease site, and they are at times in conflict with one another. So, by honoring Measure D, we look forward to a business like South Bay Wild that has fish processing, and that is commercial fish processing. I know we heard from public comment that there weren't any, that there was a concern that we were catering only to sport fishing, but clearly, South Bay Wild is a commercial fishing operation that at this point doesn't even have any retail component at all for the public. I just want to clarify that with staff, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And sport fishing is also part of Measure D. Am I correct about that, that we, we address sport fishing as a component of Measure D and an allowable activity in the Measure D zone?
According to Scott, correct.
Okay. Yes, correct. So--
That's correct.
So, Morro Bay Landing is supporting the sport fishing aspect of the Measure D zone, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And everyone's saying yes on this, okay. So, in that way, then we're talking about protecting the eel grass and the options for doing that. One thing is better than another, but that's changed in two years. Preserving public access, so obviously, we've got the public wanting to come onto public land, which is the waterfront area, yet there's a Measure D component to that land, which talks about having a commercial fishing focus. So, when you've got people wandering through a commercial zone, there are inherent conflicts with lots of things, trucks, you know, big containers, wet water, you know, the, if you've got a fish processing area, things are wetter. So, I think these are all the conflicting issues that we have to somehow sort out about this one particular project. So, in addition, very long process, many changes to the original vision, delays in overall phasing, adjustments and extensions and lease improvements, and then ownership change. I would say that Mr. Fowler does rightly put out that council has changed, staff has changed since the beginning of the project, but I would also, also say that the actual ownership of, of that lease site has also changed, and that's why we're seeing Mr. Fowler and not the original applicant. So, there has been a lot of change, and I think we're managing it as best we can, and I appreciate that our planning commission's doing the same. So, at this point, I am inclined to agree that the sign doesn't do the architecture of the renewed building justice. And again, that, so I would, I would support that condition staying in the project. I do, I really like the overall vision and the new focus. I think that, Mr. Doughty, you put a lot of time into it, obviously the applicant did as well, and you're trying to get something approved through coastal, and they've asked you to come back and take a look at it, and I think you took them seriously. And I think that you incorporated, from your perspective, exactly what you were hoping that they were looking for when they talked about more maritime feel. So, I, I do appreciate reuse of buildings. That said, I certainly, we're all a little bit attached, maybe not all, but certain people are certainly attached to the Thai boat, and the reuse of that building, I think that the Tognizini business has done a great job of rehabbing it and giving it value to us as a lease site, certainly. And it will be a little sad to see sometimes things like that, that have been well reused, transition. But I think at some point, you know, things do, we do have new things and old things sometimes, the time, you know, it's, it's time to renew. So, in that way, I think that the current design that you proposed, I, I do like it, and I think it adds appropriate flavor to what's already on the waterfront in that area, and then also in the entire waterfront. I think it's a thoughtful process, and I appreciate that. I do support, therefore, the combination, I'd like to have a little more clarity on the combination of the mirroring, I know the applicant has asked us to mirror the coastal conditions for the tables and chairs on the deck. I want to just kind of clarify that exactly. Would that be accepting what's in the staff report, that it's staff recommendation, which is a little bit of a compromise from planning commission? So, I just want to clarify exactly what that condition would be for Mr. Fowler. But I am leaning, I am agreeing with the compromise position that I think the staff report presents. And as far as the conditions six and seven that were put on by the planning commission, I echo the concerns of the mayor and Councilmember Schmuckler. I'm not, not sure I was clear exactly on how Councilmember heading, but I feels about it, but I do support the global view that you've brought forward to the project by ensuring that that access is available to the public on the floating dock. The history of it's really interesting to know that it was something that was new and different at the time. It does solve some of the conflicting uses that we have in the Measure D zone that simply don't exist, south of Beach Street. And we want to support the Measure D compliant businesses. So, I think it is an idea that's certainly applicable for us, but I certainly don't want us to not have a connector, and I wouldn't want it to be delayed because there was something we missed tonight. So, I am in support of using the floating dock as the public access, but I think we just probably want to have a little more conversation about how we'll accomplish that globally on the whole, and the whole master project. So, I am, yes, on the condition for the sign, would like clarity on the condition for the deck and the tables and percentages there. And then, I think we need to further discuss how we're going to move forward on six and seven. Okay, thanks.
Thanks. We're all tidied up on everything then?
Yeah, I should, it sounds like everyone wanted to cover all the different points, so I'll go ahead and make my comments regarding the, the pole sign. I think, or I do agree with staff recommendation on that. I think it doesn't fit any longer. The building does stand on its own, and I think removal of the pole sign also helps address the viewshed concerns that we've heard, that will, that will help there and overall aesthetics. So, I'm, I'm in favor of that condition. And my thought would be, because I think there, the concerns about the, the restaurants, it's basically been a consolidation of the grandfathered restaurant rights that exist on the site now, consolidating them onto the second floor. But with the public view deck out near there, the concern would be that it would naturally start to spill over onto that area. We need to be careful about that, as been mentioned. My thought would be add a condition that, or a component to that condition that does not allow any table service to that area. And I think that would do it, along with the language that has been talked about, and we'll get a little more clarity from staff on the actual layout there. But I think that, the layout component was addressed, as, as we heard earlier, and just confirming that from staff. So, without table service being allowed there, I think that would address the bigger concerns of sprawl. I think, I think the comment about the bike parking was good and would be a very modest addition. I, I actually do like the architecture. I think they took it to heart from the Coastal Commission and came back with a, with a better project that does have some excellent view quarters. As far as the lateral access goes, initially going into this, I very much resounded with the planning commission and their discussion about trying to figure out a way to have a waterside lateral access along the building. And in looking at it more closely, talking with their staff, and then thinking more about the commercial fishing activities that we're now enjoying on, on the north side of the building there as part of this lease, I, I don't think that's, that's appropriate and safe. And I think what, what is proposed is going to effectively include some nice public access on the waterside, on the southern half of the building as it's outlined, and then with the flow of public walkway and so forth to the new commercial fishing area, to be able to engage with that, and then the steps up to the viewshed on the second level deck, along with the floating docks. I think we are upholding the intent of public access. So, we have to balance the Measure D intent and the public access hope that we can achieve there because of the value with it. So, I think this project as proposed with staff recommendations is, is doing that. I have the more universal concern still about making the final connection, but aside from that, those are, that's where I'm at with, with it currently.
If I just might clarify Christine's question about not being quite sure where I was with regards to lateral access. My comment was that I think there has been significant inured benefit to the lessee, Mr. Leig, who, and I haven't seen the lease, and I'm not exactly sure of what is in that, but, but if the leasehold improvement needs to be moved somehow by the, the city, I don't think it should be on Mr. Fowler. I think it should be moved by the city if at all possible, because there has been significant benefit over the years because of the, what I'll say, diminished value of the lease and great economic benefit that has occurred. And, and we should try to move to get that lessee to do those leasehold improvements as quickly as possible and make it happen. So, that's what I was saying, yeah. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the history on that.
Yeah, thanks.
I appreciate that.
So, to move forward on, I think we're in, in agreement on the pole sign. We're consistent there. Condition number eight, mirroring the Coastal Commission condition on the tables on the view deck with the additional language of does not allow table service. I think that's a good point. I would support that. I'm looking at head nodding that, that would support that as well, which focuses back to six and seven. Personally, my suggestion wasn't, starting off on this, wasn't to hold this project hostage over this, over item six and seven. I thought, from, from my opening comments on this, I wanted to bring the history of at least what I experienced as this project was coming forward, and obviously, I expressed my disappointment in some of the lateral accesses and how it's, it's transpired. I think it's, I don't need to go into more detail of that, but I, I think it's, it's pretty clear that if we are to go through tonight, or if, we'll get into more deliberation on that, the proposed project, at the time when this was, that came to everybody, we were going to have a complete lateral access. When it comes to six and seven, condition six and seven, that deals specifically with the lateral access of the land improvements and the design of the building, which, Gene, I was complimentary of. I think it was, it was kind of interesting, your comment, pretty cool, huh? Basically, you know, kind of that excitement level of your own work, which, you know, I think that's, that's cool in of itself. But I wanted to tie the concern of lateral access with the land site with the overall project, and that was the waterfront lateral access. And, to a certain degree, what's complex is we still have this conditional use permit. There's three applicants tied to that. And as far as I can tell, there's no way to dissolve that conditional use permit into separate use permits. And it's pretty much going to say, stay continuous until the docks go away at some point. So, you know, I think, for me, even going back to, it was interesting that Mr. Leig was commenting as a applicant to this conditional use permit was not necessarily in favor of the conditional use permit that we're discussing. There's a lot of confusion and irony in that. So, that was, the only reason for me to take the, to request the pause and continuance was, you know, you know, 30 days to be able to have some communication with that, the other applicant involved in this, this conditional use permit, to get some verbal commitment to them. And, and actually, some verbal commitment to Mr. Fowler, because he signed up for this conditional use permit himself. So, I, you know, those are just my thoughts. I, you know, I've been probably spending a lot more time on this today, especially when I kind of exposed some of the other documents that I realized that I actually had on some of this. So, I think that's, that's what I appreciate about this council, and as we've deliberated through on several different issues, we're able to talk through things and come to some conclusion and, or help the discussion move along and the project or decision move along. So, you know, I, I support the project overall. The, the lateral access issue in the land use project as proposed, I, I don't have a big issue. I understand where planning commission came from on that, but I, I think it's, it's disappointing after diving into this a little bit more detail today to, to, to discover that, you know, basically, we have a gap there that, you know, I don't know if we really have much leverage to, to make sure it's going along. And it's, and it's really disappointing that there could be an expanded timeline to where we have, you know, a continuous waterfront lateral access. So, overall, I'm supportive of the project. Mr. Fowler, I'm going to invite you up because I know you've been patiently wanting to respond to some of these questions.
Swarming in my chair.
And, thank you. And thank you.
First of all, just a little added information here. Not shown on here is the, there's an existing gangway down to the existing dock to the Papa Gallo and the Chapeau down there. I wasn't able to get my permit done until I was able to go to Dinerji and negotiate a long-term license agreement there. So what, what will happen here at the point that the Phase 1B docks are done is we will have public access from, as soon as George gets his docks completed down here, we'll have public access off of the South Teapier and up through there. And currently, we are allowed, we have public access down onto these docks. Now, I'll grant you that there's a gap there, but that's not really that unusual here in Morro Bay. This, the public lateral access kind of a thing has been something that's been, every project's been conditioned with. And if you go up and down the waterfront, there's, there's a number of gaps out there. The aquarium is one example of that. Those will get rectified as they go forward. Cindy, could you go back to what the original dock configuration was there, the prior slide, I think?
Yeah, that's fine. When I was doing my due diligence on acquiring this, this leasehold, the, this wasn't the exact dock configuration that was actually approved. There was another interim one here. And the, these docks down here are right on the lease line between Harbor Hut and Morro Bay Landing. I met with the leaseholder there before I did it, and one of my conditions was I need to make sure that I could go forward with, with my plans to build. And I was anxious to know that he was, he was gonna go forward with it, because he was responsible for half, half the cost of that dock, for example, and I think half the cost of another dock over on this side. I wasn't able to get him to agree to do that. And that's the reason I came forward with the new configuration of docks, was to be able to separate the docks off the lease line and be able to operate, or be able to build those independently. I've had numerous discussions with, with the leaseholder. I've offered to finance the construction of the docks. I've offered to buy his, his water lease out there so that we could go ahead and do it. The city council, or, I'm sorry, he, he made an application to, to build some office space within the restaurant recently. And with that, he was, he was granted another 10 years on his lease. I suggested to him that, you know, the, the office space doesn't generate him any income, whereas the docks do. Why don't you invest that money down on the docks? I just haven't been able to get there with him, is the bottom line.
I think I'll leave it there. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
I do. The one question that was brought up about the parklet, the trash receptacle, covering that versus just screening it. And then the other question was if the city does exercise the agreement to convert the parklet, the pocket park into a public bathroom and et cetera, then we have to find a space for those trash receptacles. And when I look at the drawing, the only logical space for that is that public open space corridor between Harbor Hut and your building. So I just, I, you know, that, we've already had some situations where we're dealing with trash receptacles that aren't really attached to the lease site, and they should be. So can you explain how you might be able to deal with that?
Well, we, we put the trash receptacle there because it was part, it is part of the lease site. It, it, it will still remain a part of the lease site if the, if the city exercises their option, because we looked at that when, when Eric and I were negotiating that, that option. There really isn't a good place to put a trash receptacle on the site other than there. The, since you don't have a floor plan, it's a little hard to point to at the moment. But the, the location that you're talking about there would require the, the trashcans to come, somehow or another, come out over the harbor walk there.
Right.
And, and be picked up by the, by the
Right.
The garbage company that way. So we just weren't able to come up with a, with an alternate location for it. As far as your, the bicycle is concerned, I assume that we had bicycle racks in that park. And if we don't, we'll, we'll put them in there. I have no problem with that.
So I see signals from Jean and maybe from Eric. Jean?
Yeah, my chance to weigh in really quickly. On the pocket park, trash receptacles were originally in the master plan at that location. And we are going to provide bicycle racks. They're already on the plan already. And then I'll follow up on, on one, Phase 1B, the new docks that we're building. Bob mentioned it, that we will have a lateral, it's gonna be a vertical access that will go back up to the harbor walk, approximately in the same location as the one that goes down to the Papa Gallo now. So public will be able to come down South Teapier, go across, and then go back up. So that might mitigate out some of your concerns about lateral access.
That's helpful, thanks.
I might also point out to you that while the Harbor Hut lease may not have any kind of time constraints in it, mine certainly does. I'm supposed to have, well, I was supposed to have my initial docks done by July of this year, I think. And the building, or the second phase of docks in the building completed by July of I'm not trying to meet those, those time constraints, but I don't believe that, that Harbor Hut has those kinds, has that kind of a condition in its lease.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Fowler. Any other questions while he's here? Seeing none. Christine?
Yes, thanks for allowing us to ask one more. So I was just wondering, when you hear about the discussion we've been having, Mr. Fowler, about, you know, taking a 30-day pause and then coming back, I was wondering what your response to that may be? And encouraging more time to, you know, work with the neighbor.
This has been a very long and arduous process. The, the only reason we're here is because of the architectural considerations or the condition that the Coastal Commission put on it. I almost regret having come in with as extensive a change to the building as we've done now with, with how it's opening up all these other issues that, that we're dealing with. I, I think I might have been better off if I just redesigned the former building and submitted it for substantial compliance. So I understand having to get your arms around this and understand what we're doing, but I think our whole purpose here is really to look at the architecture of the building and all these other issues have been decided before.
Thanks, Christine. Thanks, Bob. I think Eric, maybe you were next, you were kind of signaling on comments of the pocket park, maybe?
Yeah, yeah. Mr. Ray, yeah, you picked up on that. Well, first, I'm, I'm gonna add my, my standard disclaimer that all this was initiated back when I was a humble chief harbor patrol officer and just driving boats. So just trying to, group effort to put all this back together. Regarding the, the pocket park and the trash dumpsters, and if the city exercises its option, if the city exercises its option to build a restroom and/or showers or some combination in there, we are obligated, per the amendment that we did back last year, to accommodate his trash enclosure in there somehow into that design.
Okay.
So it doesn't get shoved off somewhere else. It'd be nice if we could put it somewhere, and maybe we could, and we'll, obviously, I would approach Mr. Fowler with that in the future if it gets to that point. But it does allow for that inside the park.
Okay, thanks. So we've answered the trash receptacles, bike, and covering the trash receptacles, is that an issue for you, Mr. Fowler? To Jean?
You know, it's not something that I thought about at this point, but Kathy did just hand me a note here and says that the waterfront master plan doesn't allow for trashcans because of the height in the view corridor. I'm not quite sure what that means, and I'm not quite sure how you envision seeing them covered. I agree with you. I, I don't like birds getting into the trash either, and it is a significant problem. But I'm not sure what all the city's policies are when Kathy brings this up to me as to what we can do. I'm perfectly willing to look at it, though.
Understand. I, considering height and all that, it's not a big deal as far as covering that. And, okay, thanks. So coming back to council and the discussion on continuing this with some of the conversations, so I'll discuss that. Part of my, as I discussed my, my thoughts on that earlier, basically giving you the opportunity to talk to the neighbor and applicant, and basically for council to hear exactly what was, what might transpire. In the conversation for you, you're basically telling us, I've already gone through that. I've expressed it, you know, I'd finance it, I'd work with you on it, do whatever you could on that. So that basically is my answer on what the Harbor Hut leaseholders' response would be. And not to hold up this project any further, I would be inclined to move ahead with it tonight with the conditions that we've all discussed. I appreciate all the conversation leading up to this, because I, I think it was, it's just been a complex project. And like I say, I go back, like I said before, you've been working very hard at getting this, because you've got a timeline, you're motivated to get it done. I think, you know, there's been compliments on, on the design as well. It's really cool, Jane, fun, not to overuse that word, but I think all the way around, it's, it's worked out well. So it seems like we can go, move ahead with, unless others want to discuss whether or not we, any further continuing this or just moving ahead tonight. I guess, you know, I was the one that prompted that. I would encourage us to forego that, move ahead with staff recommendations that would not allow the pole sign. We would make the appropriate modifications to condition eight, staff recommendation to mirror the Coastal Commission benches and do not allow the table service, conditions six and seven. Scott, could you repeat how to address conditions six and seven? Strike?
Yeah, yeah, we were just striking them, and then we were recommend, we were recommending a modification to condition eight. So staff recommendation was the 50% piece. Coastal Commission conditioning, initial conditioning had unfettered access for tables, you know, for, yeah, and three benches. So, so you could just go back to Coastal Commission conditioning and add the, and add the piece for no table service. You could take staff's recommendation and limit the location of tables to 50% of the width of that deck area. That's what staff's recommending. And then add to that the no table service out on the deck. So those are your options there.
Okay. So I guess discussion back on condition number eight, modify the tables. Anybody want to have further discussion on that, per this recommendation? Christine?
I think that in terms of use, if you're there for a short term just to look at the view, then it's fine if there's not sufficient seating. But are we talking about half of the space will be wide open with nothing? Or, because then I think, wow, are we limiting people's ability to enjoy it if there's not? I want to make sure there's proper seating.
So there's a, there's a width to the deck, and I don't know what it is. There's a width to it. We were said, hey, 50%, we'll cut it in half, and you can have tables along 50% of the railing. And the other 50% of the railing has the eight-foot setback that the Planning Commission requested. Because Planning Commission condition in the resolution that's for you now has an eight-foot setback along that railing where you can't have tables.
Right.
And we were sort of, staff's
Compromise.
Position was a compromise. And probably, in our opinion anyway, was something that seemed reasonable, because I think people might want to sit down at the railing.
Yes, no, I agree. I think people would want to sit there. That's what I'm saying, I want to make sure that we're ensuring there's proper seating space for folks to sit. And that we're not allowing, in some reason, we're not being flexible to allow people to use the space as they naturally would. So if we have a lot of open, I guess, I want to be clear, so what, what the compromise is, is there will be open space, but only toward the railing, not going north and south, from east to west.
Yeah, once you get, once you get away from that eight-foot area, you know, and so on one part of it, my guess is you probably have, I don't know, two tops, tables?
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, for the first 50%, you have a couple of them. And then once you get into that other 50%, then it's open, eight foot back from the railing. So you can walk up, hang out, look around. And then behind that eight foot, you have other tables.
Gotcha, okay. That seems like a wise compromise.
For the whole deck, eight, beyond, once you go back eight foot, they can have the configuration how they want.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments on that?
Well, so you're talking about seating for the restaurant and service for half of that, or just tables to sit down?
It's all, on the deck, it's all just tables to sit down for the public, because it's the public deck.
Thank you.
And all the seating up there is for the public.
Thank you.
It's not restaurant seating.
Thank you.
No, you're all good?
That works for me, as long as we have the no table service.
Okay. So it looks like we've met all the conditions. We've addressed bike racks. There's nothing, a condition in here for that, but that's part of the project. The trash receptacles will be incorporated into a bathroom if it were to so take place. So we're covered on not losing that. Entertain the covering of the trash receptacles. I think that'd be worthwhile to, to explore that as part of this. And, and any other comments?
One, I have one comment. Do we want to direct staff in any way to reengage the applicant on closing the gap?
Yeah, that, that might be outside tonight's discussion, but looking forward to
We were gonna do it anyway.
Okay, all right.
Okay, just wanted to make sure we were clear that that
Okay, all right.
Okay, great.
So we've covered all the conditions, so we can move for a motion to approve conditional use permit UPO 058 with staff recommendations to strike conditions six and seven. Modify condition number eight for 50% coverage on the view deck. In addition, do not allow table service on the view deck. And to go with staff recommendation and not allowing the pole sign. Okay? Anything else on that?
Covers the trash.
Covers the trash receptacle?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
And except, I guess, the reg, the remainder of the PC recommendation, or remainder of the resolution, I guess.
And the remainder of the Planning Commission resolution?
Yeah.
And I think somebody was saying the bike racks, but are we? Okay, okay, all right, good. Do you want me to repeat that one more time?
We're good, we got good notes.
Okay, we got it. So if council's good, we need a second?
Second.
Second, by, so a motion by Mayor Irons, second by Councilmember Johnson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None, motion carries 4-0. Mr. Fowler, thanks very much. Thanks. Do we need a five-minute break? We want to get into, five minutes? Okay. We'll be a five-minute recess, and we'll be right back. Thanks very much. Okay, we're back to our regular city council meeting after our recess. And we are moving on to item D2. So we jumped out of order a little bit after we got done with consent. We don't open our public hearings until 7:00 PM. So we jumped from there to item C1 and then item D1. And the last And the last item on the agenda is item D2 and it's consideration and adoption of resolution number 5815, updating the city council policies and procedures manual. And this will be Mr. Panoni, thank you.
Well, since Dave's name, since Dave's name's on there too, I'm going to hand it off to him.
Okay. But at any rate, we're looking at the clock and we're going to, and not to put a timeline on this, but I've been asked, respectfully asked that we're going to get through this quickly. So I said, okay, we'll, we'll get through this quickly, but thoughtfully.
As part of the, as part of that process that you've heard about often here, where we're reviewing things to see if we can't assist in making things easier and more understandable, that's what we did with your council policies. Some based on requests made by one or two council members, others just as I was reading it and other staff members reading it, we just went through it and sort of brought it up to date. There's no magic to anything we did. We just tried to clarify it. There's a couple of things we changed because, in my opinion, the way it was set up, it was a violation of the Brown Act and we shouldn't be having something in your policy that clearly says that. And that's basically on pages 43 and 44, the issue of the council being involved in hiring department heads. And there's two or three additions I'd like to make tonight or changes. On page 32, there's a typo at the bottom of the page that says 3.1.6. That should be 3.1.7. Page 32 at the bottom, otherwise it was two 3.1.6s. On page 36, because this policy in a roundabout way also applies to some of the committees and boards that you have, and those have bodies greater than five members, on page 36, item 4.2.2.1, I would just strike the parenthetical that refers to three or more. So we just have a quorum. And then I placed on your dais a change by adding a new section 3.1.2 that basically says the council members also have to follow the same thing that the mayor has to follow, which is if either the mayor or the council or on another legislative body, they can say what they think is appropriate and if asked to make comments, and they just have to make sure that they, if they haven't gotten the approval from the council, that's what the city's position is, they just have to communicate that it's their individual statement. And so I would just request that you add this 3.1.2, which basically says that for the council. And with that, I'm done.
Great, thank you for that. And it really is good to go through all these things periodically and freshen up. And we did that earlier on a couple of municipal ordinances. And so the only comment, so we'll go into questions first, so I guess I'll start with questions and then we'll open up to public comment. I'm reminding myself, verbally reminding myself, we'll go through questions, open up for public comment, bring it back for discussion. The comment about, on page 32, 3.14, 3.15, and 3.16. It, the language in there, in the past, Joe, I've, I've asked you, we often get requests from league, support this. And as, so let me back up a little bit. So as a city that is a member of the League of California Cities, the League of California Cities often advocates for cities on issues that are coming through the state that might affect cities. And so we get those periodically and they're, they'll be requesting that we sign on to that and forward the letter. Yet in the past with, and sometimes it says, hey, can you turn that around in a couple of days? And without this language in here, it's something that realistically we would have had to take to council to say, hey, do we want to do this? And that might take two weeks to do. So this, this language fulfills that in the policy as it stated. So kind of a question and a thank you altogether, but I just want to identify that. And then going to what page? I'm just going to ask a question of council. And this will be a fun, fun discussion, I know, because I, in the past, when I've asked such questions, it's always, it's always an interesting conversation. And it has to do with, no, I didn't, I didn't highlight it. Having our agendas ready by Thursday, and I just wanted the question for council on whether or not we do that on Wednesday. And I know we, we've worked on that once before, but want some feedback on, from that for our discussion. I know it's, it requires a little bit more work upfront and particularly with you, Joe, but it does provide that one cushion of day to get through staff reports. And so that's my only question is to have that discussion with council.
With regard to that, you may want to ask the city clerk, but I'm, having seen her response that she gave to it, a council member who made the, asked that same question, her goal is to always shoot for Wednesday, but having the flexibility of having it be Thursday helps us so we don't feel like we're always violating your policy.
Got it. Okay. Okay, well, that's my question and discussion point. Other than that, I don't have any other questions and I'll look to my left if you want to ask any questions and then we'll open up for public comment after everybody's complete.
No, actually, that was, it was me that asked about the Wednesday because I know that we were making a big effort to get it out on Wednesdays.
Yeah.
And I know that we have a lot of things that happen quickly and we want to be responsive when we can. So I, that was my question as well and you heard my, the response, so we can talk about that. But otherwise, all of my questions were covered in the amendments. Thanks.
Thank you. John?
Thank you. And I agree, I do understand the difficulty for staff to get it on Wednesday, but some of us have other lives that are working lives and it makes it very difficult to get something on Friday and to do the proper due diligence, including possibly interviewing staff and/or other people that might be involved in a decision. So I'm happy to leave it at as is and I think you get the sense of what, where we're going with it and the sooner the better. But I do understand and have compassion for staff. So with that, page 9A. The word, every effort under 9A will be made, not make. Under B, and if I'm wrong, correct me, 9B, full agenda packet shall be published, not full agenda packet published. If you disagree, tell me or just keep going. Okay, page 10. What does item, let's see, my, my item, what does additionally, the council may add an item to posted agenda in accordance, accordance with the Brown Act specifically? Is there specifics?
The process the Brown Act allows is if there's an item that comes to your attention after the agenda was posted and it has to have action at a particular timeframe and not, and before the next council meeting, you can on a vote of, I think it's a, I think it'd be, it's a two-thirds vote, so here it'd be four and one, four to one, you can add that to the agenda. In addition, if there was an emergency, an actual emergency, you could add something to the agenda, but there's criteria that you have to follow in order to make that be the agenda, so the Brown Act allows that.
So, and those criteria, I think, are in here and I know, so I know where they are. Thank you. Page 11. Let's see, middle of the paragraph, first paragraph, debate is limited to the question of whether there is, whether or not is improper English, I'm sorry. So I would correct, scratch or not. Same paragraph, third line from the bottom, as directed by a vote of the council. If I'm correct? No? Yes? Joe, I'm just, okay.
That's the only, that's the only way the council can take an action, so.
Right, okay, so whether it needs to be there or not. And then last piece there, matter within its jurisdiction that a majority of the council deems appropriate. Page 12. The mayor, with the approval of individual council members, shall establish seating arrangements for regular council meetings. For what period of time? Annually, monthly, per meeting? Well, I know. Mr. Mayor? It's, it seemed like it's, it was set basically for the tenure and it's not really a big deal, but I just think, you know, is it forever?
See, that's how he feels about you, Noah.
Because I want to sit next, no, I'm just kidding. So that's just the, I like sitting next to you, Noah. No, is there a period of time that there's an intent for that to occur? And I'm not looking at Joe because he...
Could change every meet, could change every meeting if the mayor and the individual council wanted to do it.
If we want to discuss a time, so basically what we're saying is, do we want to designate a time to that? We can make that discussion now or we can leave it as is and we, it just, we work it out.
And I don't care. I just thought, you know, there should be, is it annually or, if not, I guess it's understood that whenever you decide, then it changes. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you. Page 15. Middle, provided that with the consent of the city council, a correction of the vote may be made. Is that by majority or all?
Whenever it says consent of the council, it's by majority of the council.
Okay. So a vote may not be changed by a council member after the vote announcement by the presiding officer. Provided that with the consent of the city council, a correction of the vote may be made. By a majority? That's majority then. Okay. I didn't know if there was something that required super majority for one. Okay, thank you.
If there did, I would have put super majority.
Can I, can I ask a question on that? Thanks, I, I didn't really look at that as closely, but what's the reasoning for striking that? And I say that because I requested a consent to reconsider a vote at what, one time and consulted, I believe with you, Joe, on this. And so I, I guess I was, by memory, I was thinking, okay, that's got to be done by the next agenda item. So is there, so at this point, what, provided that with consent of the city council, a correction of the vote may be made. So at the next council meeting?
No, so when you, when you take an action, you take a motion, make a second, and you call for the vote and then everyone votes, and then you announce the vote, that, that no one can change that decision or that statement that you made unless a majority of the council says, okay, you can change it. And the reason that's done is because, not because of this council, but policies do that so that someone can't play politics and say, oh, I meant to vote when they voted no. And they go, oh, no, I, I really meant to vote yes, or the opposite.
So there should be a timeline in there because what if next month I come back and say, oh, I want to change my vote?
If it's change the vote, this isn't reconsider the item, this is just change how you voted on an item.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, let's say I, I'm just, I'm just trying to see, I'm asking if I...
You couldn't do that unless the council allowed you to.
Right, but I could do it anytime, right? Six months from now, say, hey, by the way, I want to change my vote six months ago.
You'd have to put it, you'd have to ask the council to put it on the agenda. And if the council agreed to put it on the agenda, then you could ask.
I guess I'm uncomfortable with it and I'd like it to, the language to stay that says, and prior to the introduction of the next agenda item. I mean, I don't know, that makes sense to me that, oops, I had a different thought and I changed my mind. Or maybe we want to leave it wide open to change your mind anytime, I don't know.
It could be three agenda items later, still the same night and someone...
Same meeting or, I don't know.
So.
I don't know, I'll let people think about that. I have no recommendation other than I think it should be specified, that's my point. And I got the answer to the majority piece, so others may want to comment. Page, yeah, page 17.
I guess, should we comment as these things come up or should we roll back around?
Let's do that, that way we can close it.
Okay, I will go back to the seating arrangement, you know, just informally, the way I've seen it done is it's a two-year thing, okay? You know, I think, but that's only because people change in those, in that time naturally. So I don't, you know, I'm okay with the seating, but I mean, that's probably because I like my seat, but I think we could add a time or not. I think leaving it open is more flexible. That would be my response to that one. And then I'll just get the other one, or the response out. So I guess I want to understand the concern that you have, John, about the one we were just discussing about the vote change. So in other words, you're concerned that, I guess, there is a way, this is not the item that talks about a reconsideration of the vote, that's somewhere else in the policy, right? Maybe we should go there and look at that one and then come back and look at this one.
Okay, so a vote may not be...
I think we're mixing it up.
Okay, here's what I meant, maybe I'll be clear. A vote may not be changed by a council member, I've already voted just now on an item, after the vote announcement by the presiding officer or city clerk, provided that with the consent of the city council, a correction of the vote may be made. Next year, I might get input from community members and I'm changing my mind and all of a sudden we have an open gate of opportunity to revote on things that I don't think we should be reconsidering a year from now. And I know that may not happen, but do you see where I'm going?
Yeah, I do, but I think Mr. Panoni responded. I mean, if a year later, you know, he said, hey, you know, we discussed this, I want to agendize the item. And then with council support, we would agendize it, we would discuss it and cast our vote for maybe new reasons. That's the way I understand it. Is there, the only other...
No, that, this language is not for what you just described. This language is if you voted on something and then six months from now, you got a whole lot of heartache and you wanted to just have the record show that you voted no instead of yes. You could do that. However, if it's six months from now, in order for you to even get that on the agenda, you have to get three other people, two other people to agree that they're going to want to go through the process of you just being able to change your vote. But if you want to put something, some limitation at the same meeting, you could put at the same meeting and then you would never be able to even ask the other council members to do it because this limitation is at the same meeting.
No, that's cool, Joe, if that's the intent and, and then it's a question of re-agendizing, then that, that I'm fine, that's, that's fine. Thank you.
Thanks, good discussion, thanks.
And then page 17, this is my last page. Everybody's, yay. 1.372.2. The third, the third part there, the presiding officer, prior to the beginning of, no, excuse me, limit comments, beginning of that, I'm sorry, limit comments to three minutes or to the interval specified by the presiding officer, prior to the beginning of the public comment. In other words, you're, you're not going to say, go ahead and take another 10 minutes when they have three minutes and they're done? Or is the intent for that to happen? Because I see that... Because I see that, I've seen it happen a couple of times, and I did hear back from a couple people in the community, how come such and such got to go just a, one person, one person did it. I just, it's not this whole big thing. But it concerned me enough to say, I don't know, and, and I wouldn't want you to be compromised as a result of that, or whomever the presiding officer was. And so, that's why I added, prior to the beginning of the public comment. In other words, you're going to recognize that maybe somebody asked for 10 minutes, and then prior to them beginning, for whatever reason, you feel valid, then it's okay. That, that was.
And I think the answer to that, as I'm looking at our city attorney, is if the council majority said, hey, we want to hear from that person additional time, the council could do that, not just the presiding officer, being the mayor, in this case.
That's true.
So, I, I think it's, you know, always, I mean, even tonight, you know, I saw George going over, and the one woman that had her written document, you know, she went a little bit over, but I could tell by reading it, you know, she was going to be done. You know, it's just one of those things. And I think the other part of that is that if we have an audience of 50 people and speaker slips, at sometimes, we may specify two minutes instead of three, and I don't know if that's what is written into here, and that, that kind of covers that.
Okay. So, so I just, I'm, I was really concerned about the position being compromised, and so.
Appreciate it.
If that's, everybody's comfortable with that, that's fine. The second part.
Not making a change. Are we making a change or not?
Is the question about three minutes? And people going over three minutes?
No, it's a, it's a question of fairness.
Okay, in other words.
Who gets more than three minutes and who doesn't?
No, but do you mean gets more by us saying, go ahead, keep on speaking, or gets more by just way talking over the time, and then not being told to be quiet?
Gets more by, by either way, both. And I'm saying it should be clarified upfront, as opposed to, they're not done. 30 seconds, I get, that's not really what I'm talking about, and I don't mean to be legalistic, but someone, you know, goes on for six minutes because we want to hear it.
Do we ask them, though, to continue? Do we all agree for them to continue?
I, I don't know, it doesn't say that.
Because that's a different thing.
Yeah.
I think what this is saying is, if somebody.
They get cut off.
Well, I think the mayor is cutting off at three, to the best of his ability.
Indeed.
But then I think we do have the ability, if we want to hear more, to, if we agree, or there's a majority of agreement, then we can invite folks to come back to the microphone. Is am I correct about that?
That's correct.
Okay. Do you think that's the question people are having?
No, in the minute of an impassioned expose being delivered before the council, buzz goes off, three minutes are up, and they're done. They're basically, and you know, I say kicked off, but basically reminded that, that their, their time's up. Do we want language that says that they may continue at the purview of the presiding officer, if, or the council? Or do we want, my thought was that, that if it's going, it's either going to be impassioned, and they're going to want to go longer, or at the very beginning, they're going to tell you, I can't do it in three minutes, can I have six? And is there a provision for that, I guess? And, and I'm basing it on one instance that occurred, where somebody was allowed to go like five minutes, and then there was somebody else that was chastised and told to sit down. And, you know, how in fairness do we handle that situation? So.
I guess my response to that, being the target of this conversation, is that, is leave it the way it is, because the three-minute is, is basically the way we have been doing it, and if I err in that, or if I'm the one that is not doing it fairly, then it's duly noted, and I'll work harder to make sure I don't do that, and more equitable, and I hopefully, hopefully.
And as you're a parliamentarian and person to make sure due processes follow, I'm not doing my job if I, sorry, mayor, let him get away with something like that.
And, and the rest of council, for that matter.
It's not a continuous problem or an issue that prompted this, I mean, a continuous issue. It's a single incident, and so that's, I just want you to know that. So, okay. And then, the second part of that same place, the, let's see, the ma, let's see, the mayor or, let's see, the, the presiding officer with the majority of council members may reopen the public comment, period, to additional public comment. The, no biggie. And last was, council members may ask questions of anyone present without reopening the public comment, period. A speaker may not yield their time to another speaker. The question is, my point was, council members may ask questions of anyone present without reopening.
Where you, where you at, John?
Same, same, 1.3722, last sentence. Let's try to look at my note here. Who spoke? Question, who spoke, or, hmm, well, let, let me think about that one, my note is not clear to myself, so, thank you for allowing me the time to fix those minor details. I think that's it for me.
Thanks. Thank you, John.
Uh-huh.
Noah?
I just have one here on page 39. It's chapter four, Brown Act and email, and it's more of a clarification for me, because here in paragraph two, it's starting to focus on the Brown Act, but specifically the email component of that. And this is, this is old language that's still retained in the draft here, but the last sentence there, city email messages should only be retained for as long as needed. In most instances, this means deleting messages as you read them and shortly after you've sent them. So, I've been operating on the assumption, and I think the coaching to just retain all emails at this point, and not purge emails. So, I'd just like to get some confirmation that.
Who, who was coaching you to do that?
Maybe it was a divine intervention. I, I remember hearing something that we should just keep all of our emails.
The, if, if we have a policy that says you should keep all your emails, then you'll have to keep all your emails for two years, and you can't destroy them except by having them go to the city council with a resolution that says we can destroy them. So, what, there's two issues here. One is the Brown Act to make sure that we aren't causing a serial meeting, but the other is creating a public record.
Yeah.
That has to be retained for, and, and dealt with in a certain way. If, if the city has a policy of emails aren't public records in that sense, then you don't need to worry about the retention schedule.
Okay, so, as, as is clear here, we're, we're not supposed to hang on to every email, which I have been doing, so my email account's getting quite large. I'll, I'll be careful about that going forward.
I would, I would suggest, my coaching to you would be, if there's an email you get that you think is important to keep, print it, keep it as a hard copy, and get rid of the emails.
Yeah. Okay, and I, reading this more closely, that, that's explicit in here, and this is all old language without any significant changes, so that was just a question, a clarification for me.
Just clarification on that, what about moving it to a document file?
Okay.
Well, there's a place right on the email, city email, it's documents, and so, that satisfies.
That could, that could work, too.
Okay.
Good. Okay, those are our questions. We'll open up for public comment. Public comment's open? I get an ass shake? No, for public comment? We'll bring it back to council for discussion. Thanks for the great questions. Any concluding discussion points? Christine?
Oh, I appreciate the cleanup, and I would just say, I, I think it's important to just note again that we had to delete a section because it was not in conformance with the Brown Act. So I think it's, certainly, we wouldn't want to have our policies that aren't in conformance with the Brown Act. So I, I think it's a very important update that we've accomplished tonight. Thanks.
Thanks, Christine. John? Noah?
Thanks for the tedious work on the part of staff and council. I just see so much progress being made in, in cleaning up things that need to be cleaned up, so I'm just overjoyed that this is happening. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Noah? Good, good to go. All right, good. With that, we will, I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution number 5815 with, so, let me pause for a minute. We had a lot of different edits there. I didn't necessarily capture them. I'm just going to ask to adopt the resolution with the edits that were discussed during deliberation? Okay. Then I'd make that motion to adopt resolution 5815, updating the council policies and procedures manual, and include the edits as discussed in deliberation.
Second.
We have a motion by Mayor Ives, second by council member heading. Any further discussion? Seeing none, also in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed? None? Motion carries 4-0. That concludes our agenda. We're moving on to declaration of future agenda items, and I would like to agendize the discussion for council member Mr. Makawetzki on his request for leave of absence. Have that brought back at the very next, at this upcoming city council meeting, we'll make the discussion. Joe, you'll be giving us advice of all the different steps as we go through that, and take the appropriate action.
Okay.
Do I have support from council on that?
Yes.
We have unanimous support on that. Thank you very much. Any other agenda items? Seeing none? John, seeing, seeing none? Will, our next meeting will be held on Tuesday, September 8th, 2015, at 6:00 PM. It'll be located here at the Veterans Memorial Hall, located at 209 Surf Street here in Moray Bay. That adjourns our meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.